This is Chairwoman Jane Lichter. I now call to order the meeting of the Board of Education of Baltimore County for Tuesday, March 11th, 2025. I invite you to recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. We will then have a moment of silence in recognition of those who have served education in Baltimore County.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight's Board of Education meeting is being held virtually through a Microsoft Teams live meeting. In order to efficiently conduct this meeting, all voting items this evening will be done by roll call vote. The first item on the agenda is the consideration of the March 11th agenda. Are there any additions or changes to tonight's agenda? Ms. Pumphrey?
I move to add Agenda L, Unfinished Business, Resolution 5-01, Affirming the Rights of Immigrant Students.
Thank you. Ms. Harvey?
Yes, I move to add new agenda item T.
Whoops. Got to vote on the first one. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a second to Ms. Pumphrey's?
Second, Chike Kalu.
Thank you. And Ms. Harvey?
I'll vote on one. Okay.
Okay. May I have a roll call vote for Ms. Pumphrey's addition to the agenda?
Ms. Frampong?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Chike Kalu?
Yes.
Ms. Staluski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Pumphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Dominowski?
Yes.
Ms. Lichter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other additions to the agenda? Ms. Harvey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to add new agenda item T, Board Resolution 2025-02.
Is there a second?
Second, Savoy.
Thank you. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Frampong?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Chike Kalu?
Yes.
Ms. Staluski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
No.
Ms. Pumphrey?
No.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Dominowski?
No.
Ms. Lichter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms... Am I allowed to change it to no?
Favor of eight.
Ms. Staluski, did you?
I just misspoke.
Well, she would like to change her vote to no, Ms. Staluski.
Is that... Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Favor of seven.
Okay, thank you. The revised agenda is approved and the agenda stands as presented. Earlier this evening, the Board met in closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act for the following reasons: to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals, and consult with counsel to obtain legal advice. The closed session summary and the open session information summary can be found on Board Docs under this Board meeting agenda date. The next item on the agenda is Personnel Matters, and for that I call on Mr. McCall. Mr. McCall? You made somebody cry.
It's all good. We've all been there. Good evening, Chair Lichter, Vice Chair Harvey, Superintendent Dr. Rogers, and members of the Board. Like the Board's consent for the following personnel matters: tonight we have retirements, resignations, leaves, deceased recognition of service, and certificated appointments.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the Personnel Matters as presented in Exhibits D1 through D5? Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, Pumphrey.
Thank you. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Frampong?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Chike Kalu?
Yes.
Ms. Staluski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Pumphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Dominowski?
Yes.
Ms. Lichter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McCall.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Public Comment. This is one of the opportunities the Board provides to hear the views and receive the advice of community members. If not selected, to address the Board, members of the public may submit their comments to the Board members via email at boe@bcps.org. The Baltimore County Police Department's Homeland Security Unit and Office of School Safety has recommended safety and security protocols which are posted in the Board Room and available in Board Docs and on the Board's participation by the public website. While we encourage public input on policy programs and practices within the purview of this Board and this school system, this is not the proper form to address specific student or employee matters or to comment on matters that do not relate to public education in Baltimore County. Inappropriate personal remarks or other behavior such as language that promotes violence against a BCPS employee or that disrupts or interferes with the conduct of this meeting are out of order and will not be tolerated. Persons who otherwise disrupt or disturb this meeting will not be allowed to continue their remarks and will be escorted from the meeting. Please observe the three-minute clock, which will let you know when your time is up. The microphone will be turned off at the end of your time or prior to that time at the discretion of the Board Chair. We'll begin with our union representatives and Ms. Cindy Sexton from Tabco.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Lichter, Vice Chair Harvey, Dr. Rogers, and members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. The uncertainty at the federal level continues to cause angst, and the trickle-down effect is being felt by all. We don't know if the U.S. Department of Education will continue to exist. We don't know how that will affect our schools, and we are worried on many levels, but especially around our students receiving special education services. We do know as a school system that we don't have enough special educators to meet the needs of our students, and that special educators are resigning at a much higher rate than other educators. In fact, a recent analysis done by Tabco shows that the five-year turnover rate for special ed inclusion is 50%, and for special ed self-contained is over 43%. That does not bode well for our students. And of course, it isn't just our special education students who need a stable educator. All our students do. That brings us back to the budget and the negotiated agreements for our educators. They deserve the peace of mind around their contract and that what was promised will be delivered. I've shared separation costs and attrition rates countless times during these Board meetings. It costs the school system money when educators resign, especially during the school year. We need to work to do all we can to keep those educators in our system, allow them to grow, learn, and perfect their craft as educators, because this is what our students need and deserve. I continue to meet with county council members around the need to fund the budget and to be sure that the negotiated agreements are adhered to. Our students need us. Our educators deserve this. Let's keep the promise to our educators for our students. And off the cuff, I hope that the resolution around protecting our students is one that goes through smoothly, because we need that peace of mind for them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next are our nonprofit community groups, beginning with Craig Ackerman from PFLAG.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Lichter, Vice Chair Harvey, Superintendent Dr. Rogers, and all Board members. Thank you for your time and for all your work. My name is Greg Ackerman. I'm a parent of two BCPS students, one a recent high school graduate and one a current 10th grader. My older child is transgender and part of the LGBTQ+ community. My wife, family, and I are proud members of PFLAG, an organization supporting LGBTQ+ people, their families, and friends. Today, I express my strongest support for continued inclusive education of our youth on topics of race, ethnicity, and LGBTQ+ topics, and here is why. All students have a First Amendment right to relearn about the history and viewpoints of all communities, including their own. The First Amendment protects educators and students' rights to receive and exchange information and knowledge. Freedom of expression protects our right to read, learn, and share ideas free from viewpoint-based censorship. Book bans and classroom censorship are misguided attempts to suppress our rights. They erase the history and lived experiences of women, people of color, and LGBTQ+ people. Every student has the right to receive an equitable education with open, honest dialogue about U.S. history. According to the American Psychological Association, students gain legitimate benefits from inclusive curriculum. Research has shown student benefits include positive changes in student attitude and values, better critical thinking skills, higher overall achievement levels for both majority and minority group members, and positive diversity experiences lead to greater interest in improving people's lives and their communities. Education also needs to prepare our youth for the workplace. According to recent studies from both Indeed and Glassdoor, three facts stand out: the number of employers adding diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives is increasing, not decreasing. 62% of U.S. workers say they would consider declining a job offer or leaving a company if their manager did not support diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives. 74% of U.S. workers say that investment in diversity, equity, and inclusion is very important, or at least somewhat important, when considering a new job. Working successfully with people is a life skill. I want all of our students to gain this valuable life skill so they can thrive as working adults. The actions of the current presidential administration attacking diversity, equity, and inclusion are irresponsible and un-American. These unconstitutional actions set an unhealthy and inappropriate example for the education community. It's about courtesy and respect for all people. Listening and understanding brings us together and makes us stronger as a community and a country. All are welcome. Thank you very much for listening, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nichelle Hicks.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Rogers and members of the Board. I come before you as a dedicated stakeholder in two capacities: as the Youth and College Advisor for the Baltimore County NAACP, and as a veteran educator with 31 years of experience, which includes five years with BCPS. With budget cuts looming due to the county executive's decision to partially fund our previously approved budget, the NAACP raises a critical question: how can we ensure the effective and efficient appropriation of funds to support positive academic outcomes for Baltimore County students? This concern is especially pressing, given the recent mismanagement of funds, including the poor implementation of pilot programs in English. Two pilot programs were introduced, requiring multiple teacher training sessions, two in June 2024 and two in August of 2024. However, these trainings proved both costly and ineffective. Teachers received vague program overviews with little practical guidance, leaving them ill-prepared to implement the new curriculum. Despite being compensated for their time, they were left without materials for the first month of school. This undermined both instructional efficiency as well as student learning. Further complicating matters, the Department of Curriculum eliminated one of the pilots mid-first quarter, forcing teachers to abruptly transition to a new online-based curriculum, again without adequate support. These poor implementation practices not only disrupted instruction, but will likely be reflected in student performance data at the end of the school year. At the same time, we are seeing critical deficits in essential areas such as transportation services. Many students continue to face challenges getting to and from school due to a shortage of bus drivers, which affects attendance and ultimately academic performance. It is unacceptable to see resources wasted on ineffective program rollouts while pressing needs like transportation remains unaddressed. If funding is truly limited, then every dollar must be allocated responsibly and strategically to directly benefit students and their education. As stakeholders, we urge the Board to conduct a thorough review of spending practices, identify areas where money has been wasted, and ensure that future budget allocations prioritize essential services and well-supported instructional improvements. Students deserve a budget that is not only fully funded, but also wisely spent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ervin Gonzalez.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the Board. I would like to start to thank Board Member Pumphrey for introducing this important resolution to affirm the immigrant community. My name is Ervin Gonzalez, Deputy Director of Services at CASA in our central Maryland region, and I'm also a resident of Overly. I'm here today with parents, advocates, and most importantly, our students, to urge you to pass the resolution to ensure all students, regardless of their immigration status, have access to a safe and supportive education. Since 2013, CASA has worked tirelessly to remove educational barriers for immigrant students, helping them graduate and succeed. Through our youth programs, we have built the next generation of leaders by promoting high school graduation, post-secondary enrollment, and career readiness and leadership development for first and second-generation immigrant students. Every day, we work with youth who have dreams and who want to succeed. What happened at Overly High School is unspeakable. No student, no parent, and no one should have to go through something like that. Our school should be a safe space and a space where students can learn without fear or intimidation. I ask that you adopt the resolution that prevents the use of school resources for immigrant enforcement. The resolution should safeguard student privacy, ensure strict procedures when interacting with immigrant authorities, and create an all-inclusive environment where all students feel valued and secure. Other districts like Baltimore City, Montgomery County, Prince George's County have already taken these steps, and it's time for Baltimore County to follow suit and protect our immigrant students. By passing this resolution, you will send a strong message to all of our students and the county and to their parents that everyone is welcome and deserves an education free of fear. Again, thank you again for your time and your attention, and I look forward to your support in passing this resolution.
Thank you. Next are our individual citizens and student groups, and our first speaker is Sharon Serhov.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Yes, I brought props, and that's for you to see. The sharing of information is something that is very important in order for parents to be full participants in their children's education, particularly in the special education environment. This, for everyone to see, is a release of records form. Every year, I ask my clients in this school system and other school systems to sign this form so that schools can communicate with me and provide me with their records. Only parents who sign this do I have access to their students' records. I don't have access to anything else. The reason I'm bringing this to your attention is because there has been an inconsistency in the past year or so, starting last school year, that some schools are telling me they can't release records to me even though the parent has signed this form because they're being instructed by compliance and your legal office to not do so. That even though the parent has signed this, they don't need to do that. This impedes my clients and any other parent who has given access to somebody for those records, again, having full access to participate in the decisions that need to be made in a special education meeting. I will not bring your attention that it says "other." I instruct my clients to put things down like two-way communication, classroom observations, because those are some of the things I do. I'm also going to draw your attention to the fact that there is a box that says "health." Recently, I had a situation where a client of mine was quote-unquote "possibly injured" in the school environment. The parent had difficulty getting that information and was not available to ask the appropriate questions when the incident took place and the child needed to go home. To this date, we still haven't gotten all the information, because again, we're not following this. This is a problem.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Basfaron.
Good evening to all.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity. I really like to thank all of you for the discussion last time about the budget, and I'd like to share with you my observation, good or bad. But before that, I really like to thank Ms. Pumphrey for clarifying some of my comments last meeting about policies. I appreciate that. That is engagement, and I really encourage other Board members to communicate. So, sitting last time, listening to the budget, listening to most of you asking pertinent questions and getting answers. But at the end of the day, you gave our good superintendent $3 billion without really showing that the system is efficient, effective, and without any guarantees or warranties that the $3 billion will accomplish the goal of better education. So, one of my advantages is I have been here since mid-'90s, listening to boards and budgets. The budget proposed in 2004, 2005, 2006, et cetera, very similar to the proposed budget that has been passed for 2026 in the last meeting. And they have similar characteristics of asking questions, listening to answers, and then making the best judgment each of you to vote yes or no. I believe three of you voted no for the budget 2026, and I really appreciate those who did not really vote for it, because I have seen before that it's basically like a rubber stamp, unanimous, you know, many years, especially in the 2005, '10, so forth. So, my beef is that we pay taxes and you gave $3 billion without assurances that it will do the trick. I bet you it would not. I think the system is wrong. That needs to be fixed. If you don't fix it, you're wasting money. That's my fault.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lloyd Allen.
Good evening.
Good evening. Chair Lichter, Vice Chair Harvey, Superintendent Rogers, and members of the Board, thank you for your time. I'm Lloyd Allen, he/him educator, Arizonan, speaking as an individual. I come to you a second time to express support for first a resolution and then a policy and rule to clarify that the entirety of Baltimore County public schools constitute a safe zone, that we explicitly support students and staff who have or are perceived to have immigrant status or who have mixed-status families, and that we recognize that the above are necessary for many in our educational community to feel safe. Once basics such as food and shelter have been met, safety is the next tier of Maslow's hierarchy of needs required for education to be possible. Chair Lichter, a member correctly stated last meeting that immigration status is addressed in two places in BCPS policies and rules. From Rule 5580, it is already unacceptable to harass an individual based on actual or perceived immigrant status or national origin, and from Rule 2373, sociological information, including immigration, status, passport, and visa numbers, is already shielded from inspection or disclosure as part of a "public" record for students, employees, and job applicants. The question is whether this pair of rules goes far enough for everyone in our communities to feel safe. As an Arizonan, I have been stopped at a checkpoint in the middle of the desert on a highway in the middle of the state, and I have been through border crossings by car, foot, and air. When I cross a border, my main source of anxiety is whether I accidentally still have citrus on me. My family came to Arizona in the 1970s. However, I grew up with folks whose families had been in what is now Arizona when the Gadsden Purchase added Tucson and the rest of southern Arizona to the land annexed as the New Mexico Territory of the United States in 1854, and they're expressing a different reaction to checkpoints. They're not sure whether to carry their U.S. passports on the daily, even though the U.S. incorporated their families years before my ancestors arrived. Their experiences have taught them to act in a particular way to avoid escalation during certain situations. For the time being, they're staying close to home and moving in familiar circles to avoid any misunderstanding that would have a serious and negative impact on their lives and those of their families. I can't know their minds, but I can believe their words. I am not in danger, but believe the individuals who say that they are, and so I speak. We need to know in our hearts, there might be stuff in the world, but at least at school we are safe. It is unfortunate that a resolution and policy didn't happen back in 2017, a year during which NEA explicitly stressed the importance of what had been called "safe zones" policies, but let's fix this now and hope that we never need it, rather than finding out later that we had needed something that was explicitly out.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Madeline Veslesquez. Ves... Can you tell me? Veslesquez. Did I add an extra syllable?
Good afternoon, members of the Board. My name is Madeline, and today is my 15th birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Normally, this would be the happiest day of my life, a day to celebrate my quinceañera with my family, surrounded by love and joy, but instead of celebrating with my father and enjoying this special day, I'm here because I believe in the power of my voice and the voices of young people like me, to bring about change in our community. As young people, we should be focused on preparing for colleges, building strong relationships, and becoming leaders in our community. However, many of us live in fear, not knowing if we are truly safe in our schools or communities. Most Latina girls dream about their quinceañera, but for me, that dream has been overshadowed by the fear that has taken away my celebration, not just for me, but for immigrant families and those who may not identify as immigrants. I've gone to Annapolis, DC, and many town halls to speak about protecting immigrant rights. I'm here because I believe that my voice matters and that youth like me... and that youth like me have the power to change, to create change. We need our schools to be safe and supportive for every student, no matter their immigration status. Today, I asked to pass the resolution that shows your support for immigrant communities. Every student deserves to feel safe and focused on their future without fear of being targeted because of their background. Every young person deserves the chance to celebrate their quinceañera, reach their milestone, and follow their dreams without fear. Please hope my birthday wish come true. Let's move forward with a commitment to make our schools safer and more exclusive for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, happy birthday. Our next speaker is Raquel Martinez.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Rogers and board members. My name is Raquel Martinez, Vice President of the Parkville High School NAACP. Previously, one of our members from our unit introduced the urgent need to address the issue regarding late buses. We made a survey to gain more information, which we shared with you on January 27, hoping to hear from you or see improvement. At our last general body meeting, we had a discussion with the TABCO Executive Director regarding school climate. Several topics were brought up, but one of the most notable ones was the lack of initiative to address the issue of buses arriving late. Ironically, at the same time, an announcement was made that one of the buses had just arrived. We, shocked, glanced at the time and found that it was more than an hour since the buses were meant to arrive. Students still weren't home? Students should be able to come to school with the reassurance that they have a consistent way of getting safely to school and to their homes. Parents should be able to send their children to schools without the constant concern of the time that their child is getting home or having to make constant accommodations or calls to have them picked up from school at such short notice. One response that stuck out to us from a Parkville High School student reads, "I have been late to school almost every day this school year because the bus came late, and my parents have never been contacted about the bus being late. I also get marked tardy every day, even though it's out of my control. If you weren't convinced or troubled by the urgency before, this should raise even higher concern as it impacts student attendance and education." Fifty-seven point five percent of participants from our survey reported missing school because their bus never arrived. Something must be done to address this issue as it is becoming a barrier for student quality of assurance and education. Since January 27, which was the last time we came to address this issue in our school, we have been tracking how many buses are late in arriving at school. We found that an average of four buses came late every day. In addition to late buses, there are also buses that do not receive coverage. Students aren't alerted about bus- about their bus not arriving until minutes before the school bell and then are left with little options on how to get home. What are students expected to do when your promise of safe, efficient, adequate, and consistent transportation services aren't delivered? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report, and for that, I call on Dr. Rogers.
Good afternoon. I'm Madam Chair Lichter, Vice Chair Harvey, members of the board. I'm pleased to present the March superintendent's report for your review. First two slides are reminders to our families, focused on literacy to ensure that our students receive all the support that they need to outside of school. What you see on this slide, the first graph is familiar. This, again, is data from AMIRA showing that our students that practice frequently, meaning 30 minutes per week, have grown at a faster pace than students that use AMIRA less time than the 30 minutes per week. The other graph that you see on the side is the data from kindergarten to grade three, beginning of the year to the middle of the year progress for our students. We have added a fourth category where we are looking at our students' progress moving to 50th to the 74th percentile as well as 75th percentile and above. You will note, while there was a modest increase in the 50 to 74th percentile, the great news is that the majority of the increase was in the percent- percentile and percentage of students reading at or above the 75th percentile, and you see a commensurate decrease in the percentage of students below the 25th percentile. Want to remind our families that the parent report for AMIRA for our elementary grades is available, and this is their opportunity to be empowered. The parent report is individualized to the student. It demonstrates their level of mastery, their sub-scores, as well as specific tips for helping the student at home. And this is something that we would ask our families and caregivers to take a look at, and to the extent possible, support students at home. It's also important to note that we, our goal is to make sure that every single elementary school receives a coaching visit from our vendors to ensure fidelity of implementation with the new curriculum that is not only steeped in the science of reading but aligned to state standards. To date, 107 out of the 111 coaching visits have been completed. AMIRA and Literacy, HMH into Reading is simply one of the new foundational curricula that we are using at the elementary level to reverse a decade of academic decline. It is our work to make sure that we are reversing the trajectory and creating conditions for success. That means foundational work for our students. It means foundational work for our staff members, making sure that they come to work in places and spaces where they have a voice, a climate that is safe and conducive for them to do their best work. It also means that we are providing them with the necessary training to implement curriculum with fidelity and central office is helping to monitor that implementation as well as providing that support. I would be remiss if I did not comment on the somehow seemingly inability of people to acknowledge the hard work and the efforts of our teachers and of our students. Progress is important, and progress is really the fundamental point of education. Even if you are not an educator, I would say to you that you're a family member, and so you have seen a child from a baby. Babies don't get up and start to walk. There are interim steps that they take. And from everyone that I've ever seen, and certainly as a parent of four, I can recall always celebrating all of those interim steps that they took before they could walk. It is with that same spirit that we use when we celebrate sports and we celebrate other activities that I would encourage our community to celebrate the work that our teachers are doing, the efforts that they're making, and the work that our students are doing and their results while we are setting the foundation correctly. There is no way that any school system, Baltimore County Public Schools, or anywhere in the nation, reverses a trajectory of academic decline that has taken more than a decade to get into, turn that around in a year or less. Implementation science has been very clear. Three years is the minimal amount of time that we should expect to see the data move forward. We are seeing that data move forward in less than three years, in one year. And so I think it's important that we recognize and celebrate the efforts of our staff members while at the same time being very clear that we have a long way to go. Both things can be true at the same time. Talking about setting the foundation, part of that is making sure that all of our staff members have access to do their best work, that they have access to the latest strategies, that they are provided with the time that they need to do this work. That is why, for the second year in a row, we are providing high-quality professional learning to our staff members where they are compensated. We have a website where anyone in the public can go to see what we're offering for different groups of staff members over the summer. We also are excited to share that last year, for the first time, when we provided this in more than 10 years, it was very well attended. More than 4,500 staff members showed up to receive that training, and principals, along with central office staff members, have continued that through line throughout the year to provide teachers, para-professionals, leaders, and central office leaders with the training that they need to help to advance academic achievement for our students. We're also continuing to advance in our students in our summer programs. This is a reminder of the data that was shared in the fall, specifically data on elementary student progress, students who participated in our summer programs, and middle school progress. The elementary progress markers that you see here compare the performance of students in both literacy and mathematics, their MAP scores from Fall '23 to Fall '24, and you see the percentage of students who made improvements or remained the same. And then you look at middle school improvement. Because we were using Levinia, they provided a pre- and post-assessment, both in literacy and mathematics. And on this slide, you see the growth of the middle school students who participated in our summer program that was focused on specific literacy standards as well as specific mathematics standards. Based on our data, giving the same group of students pre-assessments and post-assessments, you see the level of percentage of growth for students in both literacy and mathematics. We are proud to share that we will have summer programs again in 2025. The dates are July 7 through the 31st. Monday through Thursday, we will operate four days per week, and the training that students will receive, or, excuse me, the instruction that they will receive will be five hours per day. We have 51 regional sites in elementary and our four public separate day school sites, as well as 12 regional sites in middle school. Both elementary and middle schools will be using the Levinia Summarize Program curriculum, and they are both focused on selected grade-level literacy and mathematics standards. And the last announcement we will make is around high school. We are changing our model to have five regional sites across all of our geographic regions in alignment with the requests that we have heard from families, from our students, as well as our data. We will have both in-person and virtual options for our students. We will have credit recovery options as well as original credit options. Our high schoolers talk to us about wanting and needing to have the option to take Health 910 as well as Health 1112 to free up room for them to engage in internships as well as dual enrollment. And we are pleased to be able to provide that option to all of our high school students for original credit this summer. Additional information is forthcoming to all families regarding our summer programs. And lastly, we want to continue to engage with our families. Special education, as you know, is one of our academic priorities. With the support of the Board of Education, we have been able to invest significantly in special education. Last year, you will hear a detailed report this evening on some of those investments as well as some of the outcomes of those investments year-to-date. We will be having another conversation with our community focused on special education this Thursday at Nottingham Middle School. Invite you to come out and communicate with us about your experiences and our next steps. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the chair report. Over the past several weeks, I've had the opportunity to visit 14 of our schools across the county. Being in schools and talking with staff and students reinforces my why as a board member. Thank you to all the principals who have taken the time to walk and talk with me. I truly learned something from all my visits. One reason that I cluster my school visits together is to be able to look for patterns and trends across our system. What I noticed includes an increased level of engagement of students, instruction occurring from bell to bell, and fewer and fewer students with cell phones in hands during instruction. A higher level of rigor of instruction, especially in secondary schools, specifically in the area of mathematics, using illustrative math. The use of safety assistants. Their presence in our secondary schools was noticeable. What was also observed were the interactions the safety assistants have with our students. In many cases, I witnessed students stopping to speak with them, whether it was just hello, asking a specific question, or just wanting individual attention from a trusted adult. The relationships the safety assistants had developed with our students and staff are making a difference. Also, thank you to the many safety assistants who have taken on other roles at our schools, including coaching and running after-school programs. Sparkling buildings is something else I noticed. Even in the month of February, when the weather makes it even harder, I observe sparkly and very clean schools. The ongoing cleaning of buildings, whether the cafeteria, hallways, or even classrooms that needed an extra hand, the efforts of our building service workers is obvious. I also observed a stronger alignment between the instruction taking place in our gen ed classrooms and our classrooms serving students who receive special ed services. During my visits, I was also looking for evidence of the work of central office. Often, when there are budget constraints or cuts that need to be made, central office becomes a suggestion. Many central office staff have expressed their frustration to me over the perception that they are not bringing value to our system. And while it is true that there have been significant cuts to central office over the past two years, the work they do needs to continue. Their work is valuable. So what did I find on my visits? One example was the strong and supportive relationships between principals and their assigned executive directors. As the three of us would walk and talk, the knowledge that the executive director had concerning the work of the principal was vast and nuanced. They understood the strengths and the needs of the school and the strengths and needs of the principal that they were supporting. Another example was the consistency of instruction and instructional materials. As a board, we speak a lot about consistency across our schools and fidelity of implementation. I observed the use of the Hagerty Program, Open Chord, HMH, Bridges, and illustrative math. Consistency and fidelity are the work of central office. The staff of central office works to ensure that the materials we as a board approve are being used and being used correctly. They also work to determine aligned professional learning that is needed to increase teachers and administrators' understanding of the use of materials as well as to increase their use of sound pedagogical practices. When students struggle, when schools struggle with how to help a student who is experiencing emotional, behavioral, or academic difficulties, central office is who they call on for additional guidance and support. I also love to visit the cafeteria, but I'm not sure principals always like me to walk past the cafeteria, but I can always tell when we're getting close. The cafeteria is another example of the work of central office. Our principals could not possibly manage the work of the cafeteria while keeping their focus on teaching and learning. And as I walked through Summit Park last week, I realized the magnitude of work central office did to make that building the wonderful new building it is. From design to ordering absolutely everything, to the creation of the new school boundaries, the work of central office was evident. I could keep going, but for the sake of time in this agenda, I will stop. What I'm trying to illustrate is that I am proud of the work of our central office. While I realize it has not been easy to be part of central office over the past couple of years, from being asked to be long-term subs during teacher shortages to cuts to central office staffing resulted in changes in roles and responsibility and to the suggestions of further cuts, please know your work is needed, your work is valued, and you are appreciated. The next on the agenda is the student member of the board report, and for that, I call Ms. Chigakaloo.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board Chair Lichter, Vice Chair Harvey, Superintendent Rogers, my board members, our staff, our community members, and of course, our students of Baltimore County. I am very excited to share all of the updates happening as we step into March. And so firstly, in February, I kind of had the privilege of attending the National School Boards Association's Advocacy and Equity Institute, where I co-led a presentation and a breakout session with two of my colleagues with the National Student Board Member Association, and we discussed how boards of educations and other LEAs can amplify or silence student representation. representation. And as a result, we successfully boarded, onboarded 15 new student members of the boards, of boards of educations, who will join us at our Start Plus Conference in the coming weeks and beyond strengthening existing representation. I'm working alongside NSBMA Executive Directors to help establish SMOP positions across four states in Louisiana, Illinois, Georgia, and California through our Take a Seat Coalition. And additionally, we're laying the groundwork for more state student board member associations in partnership with the National Association of State Student Council Executive Directors to unify SMOPS, collaborate in policy initiatives, and strengthen the collective student voice. And also, I served as the sole student panelist on the American Conference in Education. There were the ACE Experience 2025 in Washington DC, where I could engage with education leaders who just recognize the power of student representation and truly helping shape just student advocacy at any level, but especially at the national level, is something I do not take lightly. So I'm very honored to contribute to that work. And in Baltimore, our advocacy continues. The Baltimore County Student Council's Executive Board recently had their Advocacy Day in Annapolis at the Maryland General Assembly on February 17th, where the students were able to engage directly with their legislators and state representatives on key educational policies and youth-related bills. And I must truly give my just props and credit to the Legislative Affairs Coordinators under the County Affairs Department, the Chief of Staff Emily Noonan, and every student on the BCSC Executive Board who helped make it possible. And I'm also looking forward to showcasing our leading lights of Baltimore County. So as we know, Baltimore County is home to exceptional students. They are not only excelling academically, but they're making that lasting impact in their communities. And so this month, I'm proud to recognize Bea Louise Monts- Montsances and Jaden Beals, who are two leaders who strive service and advocacy, are shaping the future. Bea is a remarkable leader at Franklin High School, who has dedicated herself to uplifting voices and fostering change. As the president of the Asian Student, of the Asian Student Union, Bea is the driving force between their annual Culture Fest, an event that celebrates the beauty and depth of Asian heritage, educating and inspiring hundreds of students. And under her leadership, ASU has not only strengthened their culture appreciation within Baltimore County, but has also amplified Asian students and all of their voices. Beyond her advocacy, Bea is also a dedicated humanitarian. Through the American Red Cross, she plays an instrumental role in coordinating bi- bi-annual blood drives, directly contributing to life-saving efforts, and she also leads initiatives to assemble comfort kits for children in need, ensuring those facing hardship feel seen and supported. At Perry Hall High School, Jaden Beals has emerged as a powerhouse of civic engagement and leadership. He is dedicated to shaping the next generation of informed citizens and youth. As the program, programming director for the Baltimore County Young Democrats and president of the Perry Hall High School Young Dems Chapter, he has been working to establish BCYD chapters across Baltimore County schools to help empower students in policy, leadership, and graduate activism, where he helped facilitate the BCYD's Advocacy Day in Annapolis as well. And so beyond politics, Jaden is making waves in business, business development, and financial literacy with hands-on experience in insurance sales and business management. He truly is helping to break barriers. Bea and Jaden exemplify what it means to be a leading light. They're bold, they're passionate, and they're unwavering in their pursuit of impact. So please let's celebrate Jaden and Bea, Bea and Jaden for just their leadership and commitment to Baltimore County. They truly are leading lights. And just with Civic Education Week, I really encourage all students to get involved, and I want to give a huge congratulations to our two SMOP finalists, Forsay Ogunbe, Eastern Tech Allied Health Magnet Junior, and Sophie Vijayan, Atalson High School Law and Public Policy Magnet Junior. Almost a year ago, I stood where they are now, and I can say without a doubt, this is a transformative role. I have full confidence in the both of them, and I encourage everyone to watch their speeches that were posted on BCPST and on the YouTube page, and all secondary school students to vote in the SMOP election taking place on April 24th via Google Forms. And so in closing, I just want to truly say what a privilege it has been to be your student board member these past seven months. Wow, seven. These past seven months, truly fighting for student voices has been rewarding every single step of the day, and I just want to thank you for the privilege of serving all students. And so every single day counts with just the little time I have left. So to all students of Baltimore County, keep pushing forward. I must say thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Next on the agenda is unfinished business report on board policies. This is the second reader for these policies, and for that I call Ms. Christina Pumphrey, Chair of the Policy Review Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, the Policy Review Committee asks that the board accept the committee's recommendation to amend the following board policies. Board Policy 3160, review and approval of school-sponsored activities. Board Policy 7240, school site selection and acquisition. Board Policy 7310, design and construction costs. These policies are presented to you on tonight's agenda as Exhibits I-1 through I-3.
Thank you, Ms. Pumphrey. Board members, are there any separations requested? May I have a motion to accept the recommendation of the board's Policy Review Committee for Board Policies 3160, 7240, and 7310?
So moved, Harvey?
Thank you. No second is needed since the recommendation comes from the committee. Is there any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Frampong?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Chigakaloo?
Yes.
Ms. Staluski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Pumphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Domonowski?
Yes.
Ms. Hen? Sorry, Ms. Lichter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business, consideration of the Northwest Area Elementary School Boundary Recommendation, and for that I call on Dr. Grimm. Good evening.
Good evening, Board Chair Lichter, Vice Chair Harvey, Superintendent Dr. Rogers, and members of the board. In accordance with Superintendent's Rule 1280, on February 11th, 2025, the Board of Education received her consideration and approval report from the Northwest Area Elementary Boundary Study Number Two Committee recommending boundary changes to schools in the Northwest region to help relieve overcrowding. The recommendation, known as Option B-2, affects the boundaries of Church Lane, Deer Park, Lionsville, Newtown, Wyman, and Woodholm Elementary Schools. The board hearing on the recommended boundary change was held on February 26, 2025. Tonight, we are asking for board approval of the committee's recommendation.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Northwest Area Elementary School Boundary Recommendation presented in Exhibit J, Option B-2?
So moved, Chigakaloo?
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second, Staluski.
Thank you. Oh, okay, we, okay, Ms., okay, sorry, Ms. Chigakaloo. May I, okay?
Second, Savoy.
Thank you. So Ms. Staluski was one, and Dr. Savoy was the second. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Frampong?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Staluski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Pumphrey? Sorry, Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Domonowski?
Yes.
Ms. Lichter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business, consideration of the Campfield Early Learning Center. Closure update, and for that I call on Dr. Grimm and Dr. DiDonato.
Good evening again, Board Chair Lichter, Vice Chair Harvey, Superintendent Dr. Rogers, members of the board. And I think we have, oh, there it is, a couple slides for you this evening. In accordance with Superintendent's Rule 7610, on February 11th, 2025, the Board of Education received her consideration and approval, a report updating the proposed closure timeline of the Campfield Early Learning Center. The board public hearing on the accelerated closure of Campfield was held on March 5th, 2025. At tonight's meeting, we are requesting the board's approval of this recommendation. We would first like to take this opportunity to acknowledge the great work of the Campfield staff and difficult transition as part of the school-closing process. That said, this proposed closure is in direct support of the needs of students and families. It prioritizes access to full-day pre-K programming and students attending their homeschool or nearby regional program where they would otherwise matriculate.
Next slide, please. Thank you. Part of the decision to close, and the recommendation to close Campfield is really looking at our youngest learners and really investing in creating a stable learning environment for them as they progress through elementary school, beginning with some of them right after their third birthday, sometimes in the middle of the school year if they have IEP, receive IEP services. When we look at our students at Campfield and the progression of students, there's a couple things we wanted to highlight. Looking at the graphic at the top-left corner, you can see that there's students who, year one, this might be their first entry to school and they're attending Campfield. Where they would go from this point is many students, based on the program moves, would actually attend their homeschool and be able to receive services that they previously received at Campfield within their neighborhood schools, beginning some at age three, some at age four. Others may go to another regional program. However, with the move of, the program moves at Campfield, many of them would be traveling a much shorter distance to school and would be closer to their neighborhood schools. Again, several of our programs are moving to schools where children will act, it's actually their neighborhood and community schools, so they'll be able to receive services there. When we look at Campfield's current enrollment and you see the three, a couple of bullet points where it says Campfield Early Learning Center currently, there is an asterisk. So the data is provided based on our September 30th enrollment. Knowing that one nuance with Campfield or any of our schools that have regional programs for early childhood, students can enroll at age three whenever their birthday occurs. So if a student's birthday is in November, upon their third birthday, if they need to, if they continue to require special education services, they enroll at that time. They then remain in a group with three-year-olds until they're, they hit the birthday requirements for pre-K, of which September 1st then starts to apply for them. So some of our youngest students may have two years of instruction within a three-year-old program or classroom before progressing based on their birth dates. So when we look at the number of students who would continue to receive services, our goal is truly to provide those services as close to home for the students as possible. And so when we look at the recommendation for this program move, it's really to create a more stable instructional setting for our students, looking again, trying to progress them closer to their home schools. And some of the moves that were done already this year is we did have a reduction of more than 200 students who left Campfield when Bedford opened, when their boundary study was completed, when Milbrook was able to take back their kindergarten students as well as pre-kindergarten students, as well as the ABC program and the Judy Center that was at Campfield was always designed to be aligned with Bedford Elementary. However, when Bedford could not, didn't have space in their old school for pre-K and kindergarten, that was also housed at Campfield. However, when the new Bedford Elementary opened and they received all their early childhood programs, those early childhood support models also transitioned to Bedford. So that program has already left the Campfield site also. Next slide.
This next slide shows the general catchment area right now as it stands for Campfield. So Campfield is the only one noted there in black in the, just outside of what looks like the rectangle there. All of the other red boundaries are school boundaries that presently feed into Campfield. And just a few short years ago, we even had students as far north as Glendon that were traveling to Campfield, which certainly put a strain on, not only on transportation services, but our youngest learners were on the bus longer than many of our other students. So as part of this move, and you can see on the right-hand column, all of the schools that are within this catchment area that have received or will receive students as part of this transition that really started last year and will continue into this year, highlighted in bold are some of our new school projects. Bedford, you can see there, Deer Park, which is under construction, Scott's Branch, which is under design, and Summit Park, which just opened as well. Next slide, please.
So when we really look at providing increased access and opportunities for our youngest learners, this really allows us to, again, provide students, again, opportunities to have high-quality instructional learning spaces. As Dr. Grimm just stated, the number of new schools that are receiving early childhood programs as they open or as construction occurs really allows them to move into state-of-the-art learning environments. The goal of early childhood programs is also to have our youngest students as members of their school community, where they are truly embraced, cared for, and in a situation where they might be able to attend school with their siblings. And so being able to move our students closer to either their homeschool or neighboring a homeschool, a neighborhood school, really provides that idea of creating a greater sense of community for our young students. Again, Dr. Grimm had mentioned, and I spoke before, about the reduced transition time. So again, providing students access to instruction where it is not also coupled by a long bus ride on the front and tail end of that. There is more opportunity for students to engage in full-day pre-kindergarten programs. So Campfield currently only offers half-day pre-kindergarten programs. Some of these students will be progressing to schools that have full-day pre-K programs there already as part of their matriculation process. So again, we're providing that stronger foundation for them. And really, the goal of improved attendance, when students are traveling far to school, if you have a little one who wakes up in the morning either cranky or irritable and there, you know you have a long bus ride ahead of them, parents make decisions about what might be in the best interest of their child versus a maybe shorter bus ride or being able to go to a school with a sibling right around the corner. So again, really focusing on ensuring even our youngest students are coming to school every day so that we're starting that positive pathway for them for learning. So truly, the recommendation is really grounded in looking at the best needs of our students and how we can meet them in a place that is most conducive for them and for their learning. Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve the accelerated closure timeline of June 2025 of the Campfield Early Learning Center as presented in Exhibit K?
So moved, Chigakaloo? Can I go?
Okay. No. Mr. McMillian, were you making? Okay, so may I have a second?
Second, Staluski.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Harvey?
Just quickly, I think one of the considerations that is probably on the forefront of many of our minds is the transition for some of our youngest students with some specialized and higher-level needs. And, and for parents, that can be a source of anxiety. We know Campfield teachers, we know Campfield school, we know the, the bus drivers and transfer, we know everyone, and everyone has wrapped their arms around my child. What's going to happen when they go here or there? So can you speak a little bit to how those transitions are happening for these students?
Absolutely, and I am actually going to ask Ms. Darian if she would mind coming up to speak to you firsthand about some of the things that we're doing just in general with early childhood progressions with our students and some of the things that she's doing with our elementary school principals.
So one of the things that we've started for all of our pre-K students this year is because we had so many arrive, we started doing transition snapshots. So for all of our pre-K students, if they're not in their homeschools right now, and this week, we started meeting with principals just to give them a snapshot of everything that children have learned thus far this year, so that when they transition into their school buildings, they'll be aware of them, they can reach out to their families, and start to communicate them with them now. So the school's already ready for them to come into the school setting. So we would do the same thing for the students transitioning from Campfield. We would have meetings for their schools that are taking them in, so they would know everything about them, they've learned academically, their needs, their supports. We have a pre-K to K transition snapshot that we use, and it's a strength-based model so that students, they'll know, how do they learn best? How can we receive them? So that's our plan we have in place currently for making sure schools are well-aware of the students coming to them, so they can meet with their families and be prepared to welcome them into the school. I was the principal at Campfield a few years ago, so I know the importance of making sure our babies are welcomed into their environment. It's one of my favorite jobs I've ever had besides this one. So we will make sure there's definitely a plan in place for them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Ms. Pumphrey?
Of the fifty, for the 59 students that are there now, what, who are those students? What grade level are they in? What's the makeup of those 59 students?
Okay, so of the students that were identified to remain there, so part of this is, they're our youngest learners, those would be our three-year-olds who are sort of captured in this. However, the number is slightly different now based on, this 59 was September 30th. We're So these are students who may still require special education services, and they would receive them in the same type of service delivery model, either an inside IG-E special education setting or an OGE, outside general education, special education service model. Those service models still exist in our county, they're being moved to other comprehensive schools, so it actually provides a greater opportunity for a continuum of services for the students. So depending on their exact address, they would be matriculated to either their exact home school, if their home school is receiving one of the programs, or a very close school. So again, the idea of getting as many students to their neighborhood school as possible, and if not, a much closer location than they are currently.
Okay, so for some of these students, are these students, when we initially, when the board initially made a decision to close Campfield, were some of these students, would, if we continued for another year, would they have matriculated through the program completely? So in other words, did we initially tell parents, okay, your students are starting here, they will be able to finish before the school is closed? And now we're moving that back so that that's not, no longer true?
Not necessarily, because students receive services based on their IEPs. So it may be that a student was placed there originally because they were in an inclusion three-year-old service model. However, at the student's annual review, they might have made a recommendation for a general education pre-K setting, and if their neighborhood school had pre-K, they would be recommended to go back to their neighborhood school. So there would have been students who are transitioning after just a single year at Campfield, whether Campfield remained open for another year or not.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to clarify, when you mentioned the 80 students, was that including kids who would be coming into the building next year for the first time? Or those were kids that are there right now?
Those are students who are there now.
Okay. Other questions? Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
And so, I just wanted to take the time to thank the three educators that came to the public hearing last week. They gave very passionate testimonies. They are very committed not just to Campfield, but to Baltimore County Public Schools. That was very encouraging to hear. One of the teachers even said that it was her best teaching assignment that she had ever had, right here in Baltimore County. So I, that was really great to hear. And I know it's never easy to close a school, especially, you know, I'm very transparent, my son came through Campfield, I know how great of a school that is, and I am just looking forward to expanded opportunities for our Campfield students as they transition to their home schools.
Thank you. Other? Ms. Stolesky?
Thank you. And just to add on to what Ms. Booker-Dwyer spoke about, at the hearing, we heard heartfelt, passionate testimony about how nothing can replace what parents and especially their students are getting at Campfield. So is there anything that you can speak to that in terms of how the alternate program in their regional school, for example, would make it equitable or comparable or better? Thank you.
Hold on, Dr. DiDonato.
Okay.
Ms. Stolesky, I think I would like to at least start this question and speak to the more than 200 students that we've already transitioned this year. If you guys will recall, when we had the first hearings, that was a concern of many families as well as staff members, particularly if you spent a long time in your, of your, portion of your career at Campfield, you feel personal pride and want to make sure that the students are well taken care of when they matriculate beyond Campfield, whether they do all of the, you know, they complete the program or they leave midway. Our families are not shy about giving us feedback, and I would say that we've received feedback that out of our 200-plus students, everyone, we've received no complaints, that schools were ready for them. Part of the work that Ms. Darian, our Director of Early Childhood, was talking about led to that, that students were looked at as individuals, families and their needs were shared in advance, and that helped to make for a smooth transition for our students as well as, you know, the last slide that Dr. DiDonato talked through, all of those benefits that families are seeing for their children has really made a significant difference. And so I would say to those families, this will be year two of that process, and particularly with a smaller number, we know that this is going to be difficult, and it is going to be handled with care for that reason, to make sure that our youngest learners have what they need.
Thank you.
Other? Ms. Domonowski, do you have a question?
I just had one. So are the teachers and support, student support staff that are at Campfield now, are they given priority as opposed regards to which schools they want to go to? Can they follow their students, or how is that process working for those teachers at Campfield?
I'm going to probably defer to Mr. McCall to talk through the priority transfer teacher process, but yes, they are prioritized in the transfer process.
So, thank you for that question. As a matter of fact, on last Monday, staff went over to Campfield and had a conversation with the teachers, and to date, I want to say that there were 11 paraeducators that were told to be priority transfers, as well as the teachers, and they were given step-by-step directions on what those steps would look like in terms of completing the Declaration of Intent, and then from there, attending the job fair, which we have tonight, and then tomorrow night, as well as on Thursday. So they were given those, those steps in terms of how to submit the Declaration of Intent, and then also to reach out to schools and attend the job fair. So they are treated as priorities, they all have jobs for the upcoming school year.
Thank you for that. Mr. McMillian?
Mr. McCall, you mentioned 11 paraeducators. How many teachers are affected?
I think it was 19 teachers.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, may I have a roll call vote on the motion to approve the accelerated closure timeline of June 2025 of the Campfield Early Learning Center as presented in Exhibit K?
Ms. Frempong?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Stolesky?
Abstain.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Pumphrey?
No.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Domonowski?
No.
Ms. Lichter?
Yes.
Favors seven.
Favors seven, so the motion passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda was the additional item, and that is Resolution 2025-01, Affirming the Rights of Immigrant Students, and I will turn it over to Ms. Pumphrey.
I would like to invite a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-01, Affirming the Right of Immigrant Students. Would you like me to read the policy? I mean, policy, excuse me. Would you like me to read the resolution?
Yes, please.
Whereas through its policies, precepts, beliefs, and values, the Board of Education of Baltimore County has made clear its firm and unwavering commitment to providing a quality education for all Baltimore County Public School students. And whereas Board of Education Policy 0100 Equity explicitly states that the Board is committed to fostering the success of every student in every school by creating and maintaining environments that are safe, diverse, and inclusive. And whereas it is a legal right of every child, regardless of immigration status, to access a free, public K through 12 education, as affirmed by the Supreme Court of the United States and the Maryland State Superintendent of Schools. And consistent with the law, the Board of Education of Baltimore County welcomes and supports all students. And whereas a change in federal policy has caused fear, confusion, and disruption in the immigrant community, including fear of attending school, thereby preventing the immigrant students from accessing vital instructional programs and related services that can support their educational and emotional well-being, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Baltimore County hereby fully, wholeheartedly, and unreservedly affirms the rights of immigrant students to access BCPS programming in school and throughout the school system, free from fear and intimidation, and affirms its commitment to protection of student data privacy and adherence to all state and federal laws and regulations on student records, including 20 U.S.C. Section 11232-G, Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, and 34 CFR Part 99, and COMAR 13A.08.02, as well as Board Policy 5230, Student Records, and affirms its commitment to school safety, which includes supporting the superintendent's procedures for access to school grounds when immigration enforcement actions are sought, and affirms its policies prohibiting bullying, harassment, and intimidation of students, and BCPS rules and procedures supporting those policies, and directs the superintendent to continue to provide periodic communication, training, and support to schools and students and parents to provide up-to-date and accurate information on students' rights.
Thank you. I will be honest, I lost my notes for this additional item. Am I doing a? May I have a second to Ms., thank you, to Ms. Pumphrey's motion?
Second, Chikekulu.
Thank you. Any further discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Frempong?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Chikekulu?
Yes.
Ms. Stolesky?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Pumphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Domonowski?
Yes.
Ms. Lichter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion, the resolution passes. Thank you, Ms. Pumphrey, for your work on this also, as well as Board Counsel and Ms. Howie. The next item on the agenda is action taken in closed session, and for that I call on Mr. Burns.
Good evening, Chair Lichter, Vice Chair Harvey, Dr. Rogers, member of the boards. For the record, Darren Burns, Board Attorney. In closed session, the board considered and took action on two appeals, HEA 25-013 and HEA 25-2015. This will be an appropriate time for the board to consider motions to approve each of those actions taken in closed session.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the action taken in closed session on Hearing Examiner case HEA 25-013?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second, Stolesky.
And authorize Ms. Gover to sign for the board members not physically present. Sorry about the ending. Any further discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Frempong?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Chikekulu?
Yes.
Ms. Stolesky?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Pumphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Lichter?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is contract awards, and for that I call on Mr. Young, Chair of the Building and Contracts Committee.
Members of the board, the board's Building and Contracts Committee met on Monday, March 10th, 2025. Items 01 through 016 were forwarded to the full board for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Are there any separations requested? From what I've been told so far, we are separating items three through 11 and 13. Are there any others that are being? Three through eight, thank you. 11 and 13. Three through eight, 11 and 13. Are there any other ones that need to be separated?
Madam Chair, this is Board Member Frempong. I just had a question on contract number 14.
Okay. So would you like it separated, or you just would like to ask a question when discussion comes up? We can separate it.
Asking a question during a discussion should be sufficient.
Okay. So, at this time, may I have a motion to approve items one and two, nine and 10, and 14 through 16?
So moved, Chikekulu.
Thank you. No second is needed since the recommendation comes from the committee discussion, Ms. Frempong, number 14. Is that the one, Ms. Frempong, you said you wanted to? Hold it, I'm sorry. Which one did you want, Ms. Frempong?
Number 14, that's correct.
Okay. Go ahead.
So this lease is replace, it's not replacing, it's because someone else has bought the facility where we have done our professional development. My question was, what year were we in the lease, the three-year lease, and then what is the expectation as far as a new lease with these new owners? Do we expect that the lease will remain the same, or will there be an increase based on the new owners?
So thank you for your question, Ms. Frempong. Let me make sure I captured all the questions correctly. You want to know what year we are in of the lease? If the lease conditions have changed, and where are we with a potential new lease? Is that correct? Yes, okay. So we're in the first, we're in the first year of a three-year lease. The lease remains the same, only the owner of the property has changed. So the new owner, part of the lease agreement that we made with Loyola University, Maryland LLC, was that if they sold the property, the lease would remain binding. The new owner has accepted that and has started negotiations with us for the future even. So they welcome BCPS there, and the lease, the tenants of the current lease will not change during this three-year period. They are locked in.
Ms. Frempong, any follow-up to that?
So you're saying that you guys are in negotiations, but you're not sure yet if there will be an increase in the rent once it's time to move to the new lease, correct?
There won't be any change over the three years unless we negotiate a new lease that changes the terms. And so we're in conversation of potentially a longer lease, but again, that's, we're only in conversations at this point in time. But the current lease that we have is intact, and the fiscal points of that lease will not change.
Okay, thank you. I'm saying new lease, but I'm not referring to the, this lease that will change over. I'm talking about the lease that will, I guess, be generated once the three years is up. But I think you have, I think you answered the question regarding that, where we are with that process. So thank you.
Okay. Other questions or discussion about the first group of contracts? Ms. Gover, could you repeat the numbers of the contracts that were
So, at this time, may I have a motion to approve items 1 and 2, 9 and 10, and 14 through 16?
So moved, Chikekulu.
Thank you. No second is needed since the recommendation comes from the committee. Discussion, Ms. Frempong, number 14. Is that the one, Ms. Frempong, you said you wanted to...hold it, I'm sorry. Which one did you want, Ms. Frempong?
Number 14, that's correct.
Okay. Go ahead.
So this lease is replace...it's not replacing, it's because someone else has bought the facility where we have done our professional development. My question was, what year were we in the lease, the three-year lease, and then what is the expectation as far as a new lease with these new owners? Do we expect that the lease will remain the same, or will there be an increase based on the new owners?
So thank you for your question, Ms. Frempong. Let me make sure I captured all the questions correctly. You want to know what year we are in of the lease, if the lease conditions have changed, and where are we with a potential new lease. Is that correct? Yes, okay. So we're in the first...we're in the first year of a three-year lease. The lease remains the same, only the owner of the property has changed. So the new owner, part of the lease agreement that we made with Loyola University Maryland LLC was that if they sold the property, the lease would remain binding. The new owner has accepted that and has started negotiations with us for the future even. So they welcome BCPS there, and the lease, the tenants of the current lease will not change during this three-year period. They are locked in.
Ms. Frempong, any follow-up to that?
So you're saying that you guys are in negotiations, but you're not sure yet if there will be an increase in the rent once it's time to move to the new lease, correct?
There won't be any change over the three years unless we negotiate a new lease that changes the terms. And so we're in conversation of potentially a longer lease, but again, that's...we're only in conversations at this point in time. But the current lease that we have is intact, and the fiscal points of that lease will not change.
Okay, thank you. I'm saying new lease, but I'm not referring to the...this lease that will change over. I'm talking about the lease that will, I guess, be generated once the three years is up. But I think you have...I think you answered the question regarding that, where we are with that process. So thank you.
Okay. Other questions or discussion about the first group of contracts? Ms. Gober, could you repeat the numbers of the contracts that we're going to vote on?
Yes ma'am, 1, 2, 9, 10, 12, 14, 15, and 16.
Okay. One last time, any further questions on those contract numbers? Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Frempong?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Chikekulu?
Yes.
Ms. Staluski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Pumphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Domonowski?
Yes.
Ms. Lector?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So we will do the rest of them individually. First one is number 3. So may I have a motion to approve contract number 3, Educator License Preparation Program Multilingual License Pathway. May I have a motion?
So moved, Staluski.
Thank you. No second is needed since it came from the board. Discussion on number 3. Ms. Domonowski?
Yes. So it was unclear where this cohort was taking place. Who's sponsoring it or leading it? Anybody?
Ms. Webster. Ms. Simon, and Mr. McCollough, come forward.
Thank you for the question. If you don't mind, would you mind repeating the question for us as we're moving forward?
I just was wondering who was leading this cohort or sponsoring it. Where was it taking place? Who?
You're referring to the university?
Yes.
Moreland University.
Moreland University.
It is an online program.
Oh, it's online, okay.
Yes ma'am.
Okay. And this is kind of going to be continuing. It said, I listened to the meeting, and it said that they were reviewed. Who reviewed them? What is...who was...who's in that group of people that reviews them?
So it's a cross-divisional group. It ranges between HR, employee training development, CNI, and yes, that was the three groups. And we review all the contracts and ensure that they meet the district priorities as well as staying within fiscal responsibility.
Okay. Thank you. And then who is...like, I'm sorry, who...what is the cost per teacher, like, to do this cohort, per individual that wants to complete this?
Well, as you know, institutions charge different rates, but we follow the tuition reimbursement rate of up to $300 per credit.
$300 per credit?
Yes.
Okay. So that's what teachers can be reimbursed for?
So yes, they're receiving the reimbursement on the front end essentially, but yes, they are taking advantage of the tuition reimbursement, which is up to $300 per credit. There are some institutions that don't charge that much, so we pay what the tuition costs.
So, and then this contract spending authority, it's not...like, you're not prepaying this to the university at all, like it's by...
No ma'am.
Okay.
No ma'am. The teachers or the employees must meet the grade expectation of C or better. Once they meet that expectation, then we will pay the invoice.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions on contract 3? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Frempong?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Chikekulu?
Yes.
Ms. Staluski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Mr....Ms. Pumphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Domonowski?
Yes.
Ms. Lector?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Contract passes. May I have a motion to approve contract 4 from Towson University, Masters of Science in Mathematics Education?
So moved, Staluski.
Thank you. No second is needed. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Domonowski?
This kind of involves both 4 and 5. These are both graduate programs?
Yes ma'am.
And are you aware of the grading on, I think it's like the Teacher National Council, where they don't favor Towson University's graduate programs? Is it included in their teacher, like, in this specific science, math, science of math, and I guess the other one was administrators, educational administrators?
I am not 100% certain of the research or the documentation you're stating, or how it may apply to these programs, but they are approved programs through the State Department of Maryland.
Through the State Department?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
When we reimburse the teachers for this program, for participating in this program, are they required to stay with Baltimore County for X number of years?
Per the master agreement, which these contracts follow, it's not in that master agreement.
Any other questions about contract 4? May I have a roll call vote, please, on contract 4, Masters of Science in Mathematics Education from Towson University?
Ms. Frempong?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Chikekulu?
Yes.
Ms. Staluski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Pumphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Domonowski?
No.
Ms. Lector?
Yes.
Thank you.
Contract number 5, may I have a motion to approve contract 5 from Towson University, Post Bachelor Certificate in Education Administration 1.
So moved, Chikekulu.
Thank you. No second is needed. Discussion? Ms. Domonowski?
I'm sorry, could you just explain this one to me? That what is this...what is this cohort, the educational administration?
Yes. That allows our professionally licensed and teachers who hold a master's degree, complete requirements for Admin 1. So does a pipeline, creating a pipeline for our assistant principals.
Thank you for that.
Yep.
Any further discussion on contract number 5? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Frempong?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Staluski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Pumphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Domonowski?
No.
Ms. Lector?
Yes.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve contract 7, the Historic and Conditional Teachers Open Course Cohort from CCBC?
So moved.
Thank you. No second is needed. Discussion? Questions? Ms. Domonowski?
Could you, again, could you just explain this, sorry. Could you explain this cohort to me? What is...is it history, or is it...what is it?
Okay. I'm gonna...I'll sum it up for you, because it's a lot. MSD recently changed its regulations. This was last year. And then part of that change was a change from certificates to licenses. So I don't want you to think that I'm speaking to you brutally, but the key is certificates, licenses. So we do have conditional teachers on certificates, and we're allowed to move them to licenses, and they're still required to complete the old requirements or the pathway to licensure. So that pathway is what is historically called transcript analysis or course-by-course. So those conditional teachers who had started on that pathway can finish it up through CCBC. Many of our teachers have started there, and we would like to give them the opportunity to do so.
So this could be all different kinds of licenses?
Yes.
Or...
Subject areas.
Subject areas.
Different subject areas.
Which...do you know which subjects, or...
All content. So content meaning 7, grade 7 through 12, math, science, English, world languages, art, which is music, which is pre-K through 12, elementary, early childhood and special ed. CCBC offers a range, a wide range of options for our teachers to utilize.
And I'm sorry, you may have already said this, but this is a continuation. They were already doing this through the certificate with CCBC.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other discussion on number 7? May I have a roll call vote, please? Number 7, the Historic Conditional Teachers Open Course Cohort. They got long names.
Ms. Frempong?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Chikekulu?
Yes.
Ms. Staluski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Pumphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Domonowski?
Yes.
Ms. Lector?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number 8, may I have a motion to approve the contract for Masters of Education of Reading Education?
So moved.
Thank you. No second is needed. Discussion on contract number 8. Ms. Domonowski?
Sorry.
Uh, who's leading this cohort? What school? What university?
This one is Towson University.
This one is Towson?
Yes.
Did I miss...did I write that one down?
I'm sorry. This is...which number again?
It's number 8.
Yes, it's Towson. The...I think the titles were transposed here. At the top, it says historic.
That's number 7.
Number 7.
Yeah, we skipped 6.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. We're on 8, where it says Masters of...
That is Towson.
Masters of Education, Reading Education. How come it wasn't included in the contract? I didn't see it, or if I missed it, is it there?
Included.
Oh, okay. Never mind. Sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, it is there.
Any other questions about number 8, the Masters of Education Reading? Okay, roll call vote, please?
Ms. Frempong?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Chikekulu?
Yes.
Ms. Staluski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Pumphrey?
No.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Domonowski?
No.
Ms. Lector?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry about number 6. Don't want them to feel left out. So Educator License or Preparation Program Elementary and Early Childhood. Is there a motion to approve contract 6?
So moved.
Thank you. No second is needed. Questions about contract 6? Ms. Domonowski?
Sorry.
That's okay.
This one's online as well, correct? And what...so what will they essentially be learning, I guess, or being certified for in this online course?
It's a teacher preparation program, so it's geared towards our conditional teachers. It'll allow them to achieve professional licensure.
So what does that mean, conditional?
So we hire...it's okay. We hire teachers under the condition that they will meet their license, professional licensure requirements, because we do have folks who are career changers, who are content experts that we hire to teach. And as I said, we provide them the opportunity to meet the requirements, and these programs will help them do so.
Thank you. Okay, we've already voted on 9 and 10, correct? Oh, may I have a roll call vote for number 6?
Ms. Frempong?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Chikekulu?
Yes.
Ms. Staluski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Pumphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Domonowski?
Yes.
Ms. Lector?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And we've already voted on 9 and 10, correct, Ms. Gober? Nope. Oh, yes. Okay. So we are on number 11, which is Baltimore Teacher...so may I have a motion to approve the contract for Baltimore Teacher Apprenticeship Program, Masters of Education in Special Education?
So moved.
Thank you. Discussion? You found your answer? Any other discussion or questions? May I have a roll call vote on number 11?
Ms. Frempong?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Chikekulu?
Yes.
Ms. Staluski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Pumphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Domonowski?
Yes.
Ms. Lector?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Gober, we already voted on 12, correct? Okay, 13, which is fresh produce. So may I have a motion to approve contract 13, fresh produce?
So moved.
Thank you. No second is needed. Questions on contract 13? Ms. Domonowski?
I'm not sure who needs to come up for... So I wanted to ask, are you...do you know if any Kene's products are part of the Maryland Farm-to-School Initiative, fresh, things like fresh, fresh food, fresh Maryland, fresh local, fresh local? Thank you for your question. That's a very broad statement, fresh local. What exactly do you mean by fresh? Well, there's an initiative for Farm-to-School that Maryland MSD, Department of Agriculture is trying to push to get more localized farmers and their products into the schools that they're surrounding. And I just wanted to know, as being fresh fruit and vegetables, if we were, you know, if Kene's involved in that, or if we're involved in that? There's several different programs. So MSD is involved in a cooperative, for lack of better words, that focuses on local foods. It's in the infant stages, I would call it, for right now. There's also farm-to-school programs. There's a grant program through the USDA. There's...and there's more beyond that that I'm probably a little less informed on. Kene has local produce. They also have much farther distances. We participate in local as much as we can, depending on what those items are. But the specific program that you're referring to, there's many different ones, so it's kind of hard to answer that specific question. I just wanted to make sure that we are looking at companies that are specifically targeting local farms, so it's farm-to-school, and we're getting those products into our school system as much...there is grant money available. I think that's like in the millions per year from the federal government, and you can get up to...oh, I forget how much it was. It's a couple thou...100,000 per school, per district with that grant. So I just want to make sure we're utilizing that, and if we're, you know, dealing with companies that have that, you know, Maryland Farm-to-School Initiative. So Farm-to-School Initiative is a very specific initiative. Kene participates in many, many local produce programs, has partnerships all across the state and beyond. They publish every week, every month, you know, which farmers and where all your produce comes from, and tons of information around all of those. And obviously, we participate in all those as well. The grant programs are very specialized. They're very specific, and they are...I can't explain it. They're very specialized. They're very specific items, or specific quantities, or specific farmers. There's obviously grant regulations that go for year over year. We partner with Kene because they can service our schools. So
We partner with Kenee because they can service our schools. So Kenee is the, a large distributor, if you will, that also includes those local programs. So we choose that distributor that can service the needs of our size, size of a district, I should say.
Those are probably grant questions that I was asking you anyway, so I'm sorry about that.
That's, and we would just add, any vendors welcome to bid on any open contract? I believe this is the fourth of five-year contract for this particular contract, so we would welcome any local vendor certainly to bid next time this contract is open.
That actually leads me into my next question. This is the, I think it says like a year and one month left, and we have spent about 7.5 million, and you're asking for an increase of 16 million? I'm just, why do you need such a large increase?
Well, I'll let Ms., I'll ask Ms. Hetzler to answer that question, but as I've been educated over the last year and a half, between CEP and Ms. Hetzler's vantage point of getting the freshest foods possible in our schools, and all of you have seen those products in our school cafeterias, the amount of the enterprise fund that we are spending and grant funding that we are spending on fresh fruits and vegetables has skyrocketed over the last, over the last couple of years. So that's in part through CEP, that's in part because of those participation numbers have gone up, but it's also because of Food and Nutrition Services' focus on fresh fruits and vegetables, and fresh food in totality. Ms. Hetzler?
You got it.
This is not a question you can probably answer. Are we going to not give kids options? Like, and I mean this in like a, like a good kind of way, like instead of giving them the option of like french fries or chips, they're going to get fresh fruits or vegetables, and they have to choose, like, can we start knocking out some of these processed foods that are coming into our school and only offer, you know, fresh foods, fruits and vegetables? I mean, obviously, we're going to have some processed, but like, can we, are we going to start narrowing that down eventually?
So our menu offerings are dictated based on the USDA and what they prescribe that we have in our school meals. And so we are, the team is constantly balancing what's available and what we can purchase at a price point in order to efficiently and effectively serve all our kids. So while it is the goal to continue to improve the quality and the offerings and to make things fresh, sometimes that's not entirely possible. We've had lots of conversations around what is and what isn't available to the kids, and I think that even our student board member can share with you, the taste testings that we've had have keyed on those fresh and diversified offerings than what we used to have. And I'll say, under Ms. Hetzler's leadership, it used to be that we offered pizza five days a week to the kids. We don't do that. We don't do that anymore. Our offerings are far more concentrated, and I think if Ms. Hetzler continues on this path, they'll be even more focused in the next couple of years. Do you have anything you want to add?
You got it.
That was great. Thank you. Any other questions on Contract 13? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Frampong?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Tike Kalu?
Yes.
Ms. Staluski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Pumphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Domonowski?
Yes.
Ms. Lichter?
Yes. Thank you, and thank you to staff for answering the contract questions this evening. The next item on the agenda is the Report on Academic Achievement, Special Education, and for that, I call on Dr. Rogers.
Thank you. Dr. Didenato and Ms. Myers will come forward, please. Good evening again, Chair Lichter, Vice Chair Harvey, members of the board. We are pleased to provide an update on special education in Baltimore County Public Schools. As you know, one of our academic priorities is special education, and so Dr. Didenato and Ms. Myers will take you through the progress made to date, especially as compared to our focus plan on special education.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rogers. Next slide, please. So we first wanted to start with a thank you to the board for your fiscal support of serving our students receiving special education services because of our funding in FY25, and again, the work and goals that we have for FY26. We've been able to provide IEP facilitators at our schools. We're supporting our students who require more comprehensive services within our non-public schools. We have been able to dramatically expand our early childhood programs. And while that focus was on pre-K expansion, part of that expansion process was adding special education teachers with those full-day pre-kindergarten programs, so that we would have the capacity to provide more inclusive opportunities for students. Again, working to enhance and support our related service providers, and the professional learning that we've been able to provide for not only our teachers, but our parent educators, and our additional adult assistants. So we want to thank you very much for your continued support of funding for our special education services for our students.
So last year, we sat and talked about those prioritized strategies that are aligned with our strategic roadmap. And as you'll see on this slide, we've added things. So there's nothing that's been removed as far as moving forward with our work, but we've added and highlighted where some of those priorities, prioritized strategies were going from 24 into 25. So some to highlight, professional development and training for new and experienced staff, obviously, budget requests, really looking at workload. We're going to be able to talk about that some. Continuing to address disproportionality through the work of our CCIS funds. Also, looking, we've added this year, as far as two things we'll highlight as far as transition services, as well as a highlight of birth-to-five services. And then going through our culture, obviously, it's great to be able to talk through some of our family and community engagement initiatives that hopefully some of you have been able to participate in.
So this slide really talks about looking at our performance measures, and really what the special education plan and roadmap was designed to do was to create results-based accountability. So what is it that we are doing to serve our students, to serve our teachers, and to improve our culture? And then how are we measuring if it's working, how it's working? On this slide, you'll see a couple of areas where we have demonstrated some of the things that we're doing. So I'm not going to go into the details about this slide, because as we go through the presentation, you'll get some specific information about each of these. But truly, the goal is to identify what is the key action that we're taking or undertaking? How are we measuring our progress in it? And then what is our next step based on where we are with that progress? And we'll start with the priority area one. So again, that is our people. So supporting those teachers, related service providers, IEP facilitators, parent educators, and additional adult assistants, and the team so that they can do their best work for our students, families, and partners. You can see our special education staffing plan, as well as, again, really highlighting our FY26 budget requests so that we can continue to do the work with the team that we have.
So priority one, focusing on our people. Targeted professional learning is something that we've talked about and is a key area that I will link really closely to that teacher retention. We know that's an area that we want to continue to improve upon. While we have some positive data with regards to our first-year teachers that we know, we also know that that's an area that we agree is something that across our system, special education is a shared responsibility. It is highlighted as a shared responsibility, that's something the superintendent has prioritized. And with that, I will say that when we look at the professional learning that we provided, by being able to say that, when you look at the list here, it's beyond just our special educators, and the importance of that is going to allow for that lift of special education and support to all students to be part of that shared work. So just some things to highlight for this year, which we're excited about, is that we provided a special educator-focused, five-part series on specially-designed instruction. For school-based, so we had two strands running. One is for special educators that we know they need their own professional learning that is specific to special educators. We also know that in schoolhouses, like I said, it's a shared initiative. So really focusing within the schoolhouse on collaborative planning and co-teaching. So that is across buildings, across all of the humans in the space, and that it's not just special educators. Then a focus on pre-K teachers, pairs and pre-K assistants on curriculum, UDL, and inclusive practices. You'll see inclusive practices as a through line for all that we're doing. Again, that's supporting all students. And as we've expanded pre-K, really beefing up that professional learning around those inclusive practices to allow all of our students coming into our system access to the best high-quality early childhood program possible. Also, you'll see here, obviously, IEP facilitators. We are excited that this is that first year of those being part of the operating budget, and we'll be able to talk through some of the wins with regards to the work of IEP facilitators. Staff development teachers, again, we look to provide professional learning related to special education across the system to all different role-alike groups in order for that to be the shared work of our system. So staff development teachers are a key part of this. We highlight infants and toddlers providers, and their reflective coaching, authentic assessment, and quality practice, which is important in our infants and toddlers work as far as also improving the practices of our providers there. And then finally listed is for principals. Being able to be part of every principal leadership development, special education is a priority area. It's critical to our principals being able to support and carrying this work forward.
Ms. Myers mentioned the shared responsibility for supporting all teachers and staff that work with our students who receive special education services. So focusing on our new and conditionally-licensed teacher support, working in conjunction with our Office of Professional Learning and Human Resources. Additional supports are provided to conditional teachers with regards to certification support. Additionally, contractual special education coaches are available to work with our new teachers. This started in mid-year this year, where we have retired special educators who are working to coach and provide direct support to our new conditional special educators. Additionally, knowing that it really starts with what happens when teachers join BCPS, extending the opportunities for our special education teachers during new teacher orientation, so they have a more comprehensive overview during those few days. And they actually have additional days of trainings that focus specifically on their roles as special educators, so that they are starting the school year with those foundational things in place. How to use the different systems, how to begin to work through those IEP processes, so that additional training to get them started on the right foot.
Another area of focus of our people is really focusing on that analyzing and refining the workload standard. So I'm going to pause here for a second and be able to go through some more specifics related to our related services. We know that our related service providers are an area that we, and know you have also heard from, with regards to the needs of our related service providers this year. I want to talk about some of the things that we have done already and that we're going to continue to do moving into next year to be able to address and support this group of folks. So specifically with regard to speech and language pathologists, we, while working all year, we also worked with a very targeted work group in January, with the goal of really being able to not only hear from them, but work collaboratively, looking at the standards for staffing across various jurisdictions and how they're doing that, gain that feedback from providers on what's working and what's not working, and then being able to kind of shift our practices where we can as we move into next year. So excited about that work, and then we also will have similar, we have had similar conversations ongoing with our occupational therapists and our physical therapists. A little bit different with regards to work group, but being very, working to be very collaborative here where those concerns are with regarding to workload and ensuring that as we move forward, we're being responsive where we can be. That being said, one of the things I want to highlight is the move to a hybrid speech and language service delivery this school year. So as we know, speech and language in-person service delivery, there's a national shortage with regards to in-person service delivery. That being said, a lot of jurisdictions have moved to what is hybrid. So we, as a system, have prioritized allowing for those in-person providers that we have to be spread out across the system, to allow for equitable service delivery and access to in-person service delivery as much as possible. That is then partnered with the additional of a virtual service provider. So most elementary schools have this right now, have in-person as well as virtual service delivery. I do want to say that virtual service delivery is an evidence-based practice. It was actually around prior to COVID, even though that's really where a lot of us became familiar with that. We also support virtual service delivery with the addition of another trained human who can help the students be able to access the services with the virtual provider across that screen. So that is something that we are using in our schools, but we want to also be very clear that we have prioritized our regional programs on our early childhood with regards to wanting access to that in-person speech and language provider. So that's where that shift, we actually made that shift in October, which really was clear how we understood it was a disruption to the humans doing the work on some levels. But folks were really actually, I was thankful to the number of speech and language pathologists who said, "We understand. We understand that we have littles that really need access to that in-person support." And as much as that is a shift in their schedule, they, you know, kind of identified the fact that like, this is what we need to do, which is best for kids. Moving into next year, knowing that that's where we are, though, we are committed to making many less shifts with regards to that. Wanting to communicate with folks ahead of time so that those shifts are not something that we're needing to do in October, but that we are going into the school year so that folks are aware of kind of what that service delivery model looks like and how we're able to support. As far as going into FY26 for programmatic staffing, we've taken into account moving forward that we understand that in a lot of our regional programs, we may start with a number of students that is a lower number, and it may become higher throughout the year. That results also in the need for adjustments to staffing with regards to related services. So going into FY26, one of the shifts that we made, and again, this has been in collaboration with providers, is being able to say, we understand programmatically, there's three sections of students for this regional program, for example, so staffing according to the section, which allows that provider to be in the building. And then if, as there's an increase in students, that person's already there. So it allows for us not having to shift in the same way. We're doing that programmatic staffing in addition to taking into account, of course, planning time, case management time, IEP team time, assessment time, the need for consultation, et cetera, around both indirect and direct services, and that's being taken into account for both OTs as well as PTs similarly. Workload versus caseload is an important portion that we're taking into account for folks. We know everyone's, we've heard a lot about those two words. And I think the important thing that we want to highlight is that, especially with our related services, the number of students is very different compared to the workload. So you could have a student that is receiving a 15-minute per month versus a student that is receiving two 30-minutes a week. So that's an example of a related service. So that's an example of that difference in the workload versus the caseload. So a provider that may have one student that is 115 per month has a very different workload than one that would have two 30-minute sessions per week. That's an exaggerated, I mean, not, but it is, you know, it's a pretty large difference, but that plays into it when we look at how we are then allocating staff. Itinerant versus point of contact is another area that we have heard very clearly and want to be clear about, is that moving into 26, we're being very clear with schools that if you are a provider, if you are a school that has a little person or a big person in your building with that service, you have an itinerant provider. If you don't have a child with that service, you have a point of contact. We know that as far as, so for example, if there's a need for a physical therapy assessment, they have the person to call as a point of contact, but that school is not on their caseload, per se, at that time. That delineation and the availability of our providers to have a very clear schedule of when they're able to meet those needs, we're hoping will allow with providers feeling kind of more ability, I will say, to be able to provide the services they need to be able to provide for those kiddos, especially related to OT and PT. And then finally, the contractual services. We appreciate the work that's been done, and we know within the budget, you saw contractual services as a high-spend item there. That is how we supplement those vacancies that we know are a thing within our system. Again, nationwide with regard to service delivery. So contractual services are how we supplement and how we support across service delivery. For special educators, we've talked a lot about this over time. Just three areas we want to highlight for special educators with workload that we are happy about being able to work on over the last year has been the RED document, which we all know as far as that reevaluation planning document, that we're able to make that much more automated. The Special Education Management Plan, that's allowed to, it's provided structures for school leadership to support special educators across their building. And then finally, coming soon, this is exciting, is that the availability of a STAR assessment to support present levels of performance. So in a much more kind of robust way for our special educators to be able to have that data, which again is a time saver. I talked a lot on that last one, so I'm going to try to be short on facilitators. For IEP team facilitators here, this outlines just what we've done with facilitators, the training that's there, the e-handbook. I'm just highlighting the work that we are so thankful for the availability of those facilitators and the being able to see how we're utilizing them. Every month, we're celebrating those successes for facilitators, celebrating the successes for schools, which we know then leads to increased outcomes for teams. Our performance measures, you see a lot of checks here, which are exciting. A few to highlight. We do want to highlight with regards to that first-year special education retention rate being, as our HR data, being at that 90% for special ed self-contained teachers and 89% for that inclusion teachers, and the new special ed retention rate of 90%. So that first-year retention and then the new retention rate are high. Again, the conversation that Dr. Didenato shared with regards to what we're doing with those conditional and the professional learning, new teachers, as well as that ongoing professional learning across disciplines, we know is going to make a difference with this retention rate, because it is a, it's shared work, and it's hard work. But ongoing kind of professional learning around that, we're hoping to see increased outcomes there. And then highlighting as far as, we're committed to a 25% decrease in mediation filings, and we are at a 22% decrease from baseline year to date from last year.
Okay, looking at our priority two area, which is our services. So this is really looking at how are we sharing resources, collaborating so that we can create, again, we've mentioned a couple times, the cross-division, cross-system collaborative work in order to support the learning of our students.
Priority two being our services. Some highlights here as far as collaborative planning and professional learning communities, which I talked about. Zone collaboration is something to really highlight with regards to the Department of Schools and Department of Special Education. Cannot highlight enough is that shared ownership and shared collaboration across divisions. So really targeting special education, working with our colleagues in Department of Schools around being able to support special education students, as well as all students with, and how we're service delivery as well as instruction in the classroom. And then a focused support of our regional programs with curriculum development and implementation, and the use of a comprehensive review team to support complex student cases to ensure students are getting the support. Highlighting here with regards to our services is something that we're doing strategically within Baltimore County, is using our Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervention Service Funds, which are part of our special education allocation that is required to be focused on disproportionality. With those funds, what we're doing is building out that infrastructure for change. So we're able to build out areas of our system that are focused on being able to support students, our general education initiatives, actually, and then preventative from needing special education, but also supporting within special education. So example being, I've already highlighted within the Division of Schools as far as that ongoing collaboration, comprehensive support teams, we've been- Comprehensive support teams, we've been able to align a support team to um, each of the zones with regards to our, in our Department of Schools to be able to support um, initiatives within school buildings related to um, eligibility, uh, suspension, just, and other just, uh, potential disproportionate measures. Expanded um, student support team infrastructure, really focusing on our student support teams, our students with five oh four plans. Um, and then really exciting, which we've talked about um, with Ms. Darian, is that expansion of Department of Early Childhood. Using those funds to really invest in early childhood and the support of um, needing that, our youngest learners that not only are students receiving special education, but also any child that's coming in, in order to prevent potential the need for special education service. Some highlights for infants and toddlers data here, you'll see increases um, with regards to timely delivery of services. That percent evaluation and initial for our um, IFSPs and then family survey response rate is increased there.
Um, again, looking at our services for our older students, so our um, transition services as well as post-secondary pathways. This is another great example of the collaboration between um, the Office of Special Education and our um, Office of College and Career Readiness. So our workforce development teachers as well as our career navigators are working with all of our high school students, um, including our students who might be working towards an uh, alternative pathway or towards a certificate and those post-secondary pathways with employment opportunities for them. So we've also realigned the transition facilitators who previously had very much of like a compliance role, making sure that we completed certain processes with our older students. That's shifted, so they're really working with the workforce development teachers, working with the students on um, those transition opportunities for them and the workplace experiences. Um, our expansion of our post-secondary files, um, programs and um, if you have stopped by the Employee Development Center on a Monday through Thursday morning, um, you can see many of our students, um, that we now have a coffee bar that they are running, working on those job-related skills, making change, um, interacting with customers, um, documenting purchases. So all of those skills that they would need to then leave BCPS and be able to um, gainfully gain employment.
Again, some of our measures to celebrate here, um, obviously are a hundred percent of our schools being supported by that IEP facilitator. And then we saw an increase in um, the, the number of folks, the percentage indicating that they're having the resources and support to implement curriculum. So we are um, happy about that slight increase in that area. Um, to the next slide, obviously, this is a huge one with regards to the number of um, full-day pre-K and options for inclusive um, options for earliest learners. Up to a hundred and one full-day pre-K, um, and six full-day preschool threes, um, programs for our students. The next slide talks about what I um, reviewed as far as that infrastructure for change. Those uh, very strategic um, areas that we're highlighting and building out in order to be responsive to the um, disproportionality.
And last but certainly not least, priority area three, which is really focusing on our culture, so really creating that culture of inclusiveness, trust, belonging and service for our students and our families. Um, you can see um, highlights of many of the different activities and events um, that the Office of Special Education, again, in tandem other offices are providing to provide these opportunities for our families in the community. Uh, right, on this slide, you'll see a couple of uh, key data points, um, highlighting some of the different activities and events that um, are provided with families and you can see just, and I'm not going to go through every bullet, but the sheer number of events, a family outreach wheeling, trying to connect with our families, providing them with resources, opportunities in multiple formats, um, whether it's in-person, online, training opportunities for families, outreach events, um, and even helping families get connected with support groups so that we are trying to provide all of the resources, um, not only to the students themselves, but also to their families and helping them make those community connections.
Another area of focus has been communication um, with colleagues' families as well as school communities. Uh, this is just an example of um, the monthly special education updates and reminders that goes out, trying to ease of access for professional learning calendars, parent newsletter access, um, parent and community activities we were talked about, and then a section that's ask your IEP chair. So that we have principals knowing what's been covered and the things to ask about to ensure for implementation. Service-minded approach is another area that we've really focused with regards to our culture. Um, and we've developed uh, two data dashboards actually that are able to track both requests for support and support interactions from the Department of Special Education. This highlights a response time, which I'm, I would be um, proud to share is less than one day, um, as well as the data trends that are by level. So this allows us to look at school-specific, area-specific, um, human-specific with regards to who's providing the support and ensure that um, we're being consistent and responsive to the needs of our, um, to our needs of our schools. This actually reflects the same thing, we, we committed to a department-level staff participating in customer service. Um, and while that's a great one, we did it, and then how do we move forward as being able to sustain that? And that comes with those measures that we're able to see under the dashboard. Uh, and then the, the school satisfaction surveys there, um, this is another proud one, is that of those um, surveyed, we have a ninety-two percent agree or strongly agree with the support provided. So that's something that we've really worked to improve upon, um, and that, so that's a really exciting point that we're seeing there. This is the um, a parent survey and while there's, uh, we continue to work to um, gain feedback from families related to the IEP team process. Um, of those families um, that were, were responsive in the survey, um, ninety-five percent agreed um, that their input was valued, um, and then ninety percent agreed that their child's special education needs are met on a daily basis. Um, while we know that that is a uh, smaller number of responses there, that what we've also listed out are those things that we're continuing to do to engage families for that feedback. That includes um, having our facilitators put links for um, both access to parent resources as well as access to the Department of Special Education on their signature line. Um, parent request for support on the Baltimore County Public Schools homepage. So if they're, um, if they do need support, that it's actually right on the homepage as one of the little bricks at the bottom as well as in the dropdown now that goes right to our team for response and support. Um, IEP chair trainings are actually um, focused every month regards to parent engagement and community involvement. So we want our parents to feel valued and members of the team and not feel as if the team process has already been determined. So that's something that we are committed to, um, being able to shift that with regards to um, making sure parents have the resources and training necessary in order for them to feel like they're able to um, actively participate in the meetings. And then we're really proud of that increased partnership with CCAC. We have three um, really strong chairs who are committed to the work, um, and who are committed to partnering with us.
And thank you very much for your time, um, we can certainly entertain questions if you have them.
So, thank you, it's obvious from your presentation, the amount of work that you and your team are doing to improve outcomes for our students um, with special needs. I know we have a ways to go, but thank you for all the efforts that you are doing and I will open it up for questions from the board. Ms. Harvey?
Good evening, everyone. I thank you so much for the work you're doing, this is not easy work. Uh, and I recognize that parents always want the best for their kids and the services that they need uh, and are entitled to uh, as part of their, their educational process. You, you mentioned this parent survey and uh, the response was not what you had, had hoped for. What are ways or what are you planning to do differently to engage more parents uh, in this process and just even in this conversation?
Yeah, so immediate, I, those are things that we're in ongoing kind of discussion with. Um, we, as I said, with the IEP facilitators, I actually spoke at every IEP facilitator training last month and really highlighted the fact that they are that liaison, and this was across, across elementary, middle and high. They are the liaison between their school, our office and families and ensuring that families have access to what they need in order to be able to um, gain the resources that, that they, that they need. We are highlighting that, um, the importance of the, the newsletter with regards to how we are sharing things outwardly to families. Um, we know about the resource fairs and things, um, but, a- as you've seen. Um, but we continue to look for other opportunities for engagement with families for them to have, we know there's a lot happening. We need it to get to families in a different way and that's been that conversation really with schools as far as was saying, we know wanting to partner with regards to the office and the schools with regards to getting to our families. Working with the PTA liaisons, our um, CCAC chair is actually one of the liaisons on her PTA. So that's been a conversation as well as far as wanting to lean in and saying, look, here's the, the newsletter for families, here's the, um, what we call the padlet of information. We know that the survey is one point of, you know, one point and, and they receive that um, at the end of teams. We've had chairs share that they often will share, there's a QR code that some of you may be familiar with. Um, but a lot of families choose to not complete that at the end of the team. I understand, you just went through an IEP team. So, you know, kind of going through what are the other avenues and at least being able to say that if they don't get that, here's the access to support. You know, kind of an all hands on deck with regards to engaging families and getting the supports they need.
So, Ms. Harvey, just one of those specific strategies, and actually Ms. Myers and I just talked today. Um, so we've had a lot of leverage with talking points, the communication tool that we started purchasing, be, um, that we purchased um, really out of CNI for our multilingual learners, however, schools are using it with all of their students. And leveraging that as another mechanism to connect with our families of students on our caseload or for IEP facilitators to connect with families. Um, we've received a lot of positive feedback, um, and just even looking at our data from the use of talking points. Um, we are seeing a lot of reciprocal communication between teachers and families um, through that tool. And so leveraging that to also provide some additional talk point opportunities for families.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
So thank you for all this information and I too had some questions about the survey. Um, you said that eighty percent report needs were met, they met, or exceeded expectations. Uh, so for the other twenty percent, what was the, the trend that you noticed? What was their key concerns and was it um, in a certain area, um, a certain set of schools where this was coming up at?
So actually, the survey question is, uh, do they meet or needs and it didn't, doesn't actually, it doesn't ask for it, if not, what is that? Um, so to be transparent about that, so it's just that they did report that they did, it met their expectations. What we see um, in regular feedback is um, support with the application. So we can provide the resource, but then being able to model that application and for um, school teams to feel like the recommendation provided meeting the need of um, what they're feeling at the moment. So that's one of the things our team continues to work to do, um, is not only um, providing a recommendation, but modeling is the expectation, kind of being in it with students in order for it to, if we're going to make a recommendation, show how that works. Um, so that's just some, you know, kind of feedback that we do here and also with curriculum materials, not just providing a recommendation on planning, but sitting down and co-planning. That's something our special, our elementary team has done a lot with this year with regards to collaborative planning. Um, and the majority of that focus has not been on special educators, actually, it's with general educators. Um, working to collaboratively plan in order to show where the resources are again, um, so that they're able to then implement that on their own.
Um, and, and so I do recommend putting in something where they can
I agree with you.
Uh, give some feedback there. Um, I love that e-handbook, that has so much information in it, um, yeah, everyone should, should definitely look through that. I did have a question about the hybrid service delivery. So at, what is that age group that's receiving the virtual delivery? Is it all?
It is all, it, it's all, yeah, so, and interestingly enough, when we um, talked with principals, we actually have some, um, principals, we've been great conversations around even um, some of our students who are most impacted maybe by autism, that they've had some kiddos that actually participated more in the virtual service delivery um, out of interest with the screen, with the support of the facilitation of the trained human, as I say that, to help them facilitate in person. Um, but it really does, there's a broad spectrum. Now, do we highlight the fact that yes, absolutely, we're focused on making sure that we have providers supporting our early childhood and our regional programs? Because we know that population is going to need more than likely more of access to the in-person. Um, but that virtual service delivery is something that is used across. And I will highlight about virtual is that being principal of White Oak School during um, the, during COVID and the, we had great outcomes for our kids, great outcomes with regards to virtual service delivery. I had one of the most fantastic speech and language pathologists who was able to do that and our kids made progress. So seeing it in person and being able to have that conversation with folks, um, it really is a, a model that can work.
Thank you.
Other questions? Oh, Ms. Demanasky?
Thank you. Uh, on slide sixteen, um, I was just looking at the difference in the surveys from twenty twenty-three to twenty-five. We had nine hundred responses and significantly less in twenty-five, two hundred and fifty-two.
Yes, sorry. Um, yeah, so our stat, we use the staffing plan for survey, that's something that we've actually highlighted is that it went down a lot this year with regards to that survey, with the, the feedback. One of the things we're looking to go into next year um, in response to this is how we can utilize other formats within the system like the climate survey that we share out broadly in order to get those data points. One of, I will say, that's great about that performance-driven measures is that we know we're going into FY twenty-six that we will then look and, and work with stakeholders to then look at our measures, the progress we've made and then come back to the table to say, this is where we're moving to next. Um, and then of course, looking at things like, a lot of this was baseline last year, as you guys know, with me said, how are we then looking to measure? What is it, surveys is the best way? Um, but we wanted to compare apples to apples for this year so that we'd be able to see that measure and then we'll shift to going forward.
And who, uh, sorry if you already said this, but who are these surveys sent out to, everyone?
Everyone, so the staffing survey is sent out across all communications, we, we work with our communications office on that, it goes out through schools, it goes out through social media, it goes out in various avenues and we really strangely had a much less response this year than in past years.
Uh, thank you. And then to uh, slide twenty-three, when it talks about um, so you had, you met, you, you offered one hundred percent to that, the customer service training, what was the attendance?
So all of my staff participated in department, um, as far as customer service training and I'll say, you, it's um, those that participated directly with me in that were approximately a hundred staff members. Um, in addition to that is just the expectation across the department that we are customer service oriented. Um, and that mean that it's not just responsive to schools, it's responsive to families, responsive to students. That is a um, very much known expectation as far as how we engage, um, and how we ensure that um, we are working always in that continuous cycle of improvement.
So what is that accountability matrix there, how are you going to?
So that's part of the data dashboard that we look at as far as response rate and then we take feedback all the time. So with regards to even with families, if they're calling, we know that when we have conversations with families about responses, if there's a need, that we're responsive to that need, um, that we're not only following up with the family, but following up with the school. Um, that's a huge component of our um, family support, um, and, and community involvement unit. We've been able to expand that, so um, we now have five members of the team where we also, we had one. And the whole goal is that ranges from birth to twenty-one, to be responsive, um, not only just to the things in the moment, but then the wraparound and the follow-up with the school is needed.
Okay, thank you, and then just for more about accountability, there was a lot of slides, uh, four was one of them, maybe about how you're measuring accountability as far as the implementation responses. But where's the accountability um, in delivery or the matrix, how, how are we measuring how it's working?
So we look at all kinds of things, right? So we look at student performance, which we know um, our special education student group is one we continue to improve upon. We look at um, implementation of IEPs, we look at progress data with regards to, so it's student-specific, when you think about looking at um, progress towards goals and objectives, you then expand that out to school-level performance and how they're working to support student groups. Um, we look at it um, curriculum-based assessment data, we look at um, broader levels of system data. Um, so we're really, really reviewing any of those data points at all times, um, in order to then target where that area of um, need is, whether that's specific to a school or broader with regards to um, system.
And is there like a set um, schedule of like, course redirect if we notice the numbers are starting to not work? Like how, what, what is the immediate response?
So within a school, you're always, I mean, that expectation as far as, um, Dr. Rogers has made that very clear with regards to professional learning communities being something that we're at with um, collaborative planning sessions, looking at student data, reviewing that ongoing data cycle, so not just your curriculum-based assessments, but how are your students doing on informals, how are they doing on um, formative assessments and as well as um, um, summative assessments and then adjusting your instruction, being responsive. So it's not different than any, than all students, right, with regards to wanting to measure how we're, um, our students are performing and being responsive to those needs. The added later, the added layer to that is then really looking at how do we need to look at specially-designed instruction for our students receiving special education services to close that gap between where they might be performing and then also where the curriculum expectations are for standards.
Thank you, Ms. Demanasky, the two minutes passed.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Frampong, you had your hand up?
Thank you, I did. Good evening, ladies, and thank you for the, the presentation, it's great to see the progress that is being made um, with these initiatives. I have um, just a couple of questions as far as the data. So for slide number twenty-four, where it says that the measure is for a minimum of a thirty percent response rate, um, and then the eighty percent report that their needs were met or expectations exceed. and then the 80% report that their needs were met or expectations exceeded. So that second piece I see with the 80% when we talk about the current status. But what is the percentage rate for 23, 24 and the percentage rate for 189? Do we meet that minimum of the 30% response rate?
So you can see that in 20, sorry, that sounded like, I didn't mean it like that, sorry. So when you look at the 23, 24, we highlighted there were 106 responses. And then we looked, we were at 189 responses between August and February. So when we poured on this status is that we know we're not getting to the point that we want to with regards to increasing parent responses. So we're identifying, that's where we, I talk about that continuous improvement cycle is that we're not seeing maybe the response where we are. So then what are the things that we're going to do to engage families at those responses? So kind of acknowledging that it's a celebration and that we're at 95% agreeing and 90% agreeing that their needs are met in those that responded, but also acknowledging where we need to be able to move with regards to being able to engage families more for us to be able to then get that higher level of response rate.
Okay, so in that answer, I'm not sure if I heard what the percentage rate was. So if the goal is the 30% and then it's, we didn't meet it, what is the percent rate that we're at?
Ms. Frempong, we've moved from 106 responses over last year to 189 responses this year to date. We could get you in a separate communication, what percentage that represents out of, you know, compared to the goal of 30%.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then on slide 20, where we talk about the culture and the family and community touchpoints as far as what's happening this school year. These numbers, again, it's all good information and I was going to ask about CCAC, but I see that that had already been, you mentioned that in the last slide, as far as the opportunity for partnerships and reaching out to our families. But for these community points, this is what it is this year. I guess, again, is there something to compare to from last year? Or are we saying there's a certain percentage that we wanted? Again, just because this is a snapshot in time, I'm trying to understand how we, I guess, look at it as far as, you know, performance. Is it, we're doing better than last year, we still have work to do? Can you just give some kind of more context to this slide on slide 20?
Yeah, so what I'd like to highlight is that we, last year was the first year that we had built out as far as family and community support unit. It was a team of one, actually. And while we had committed to having a, I think our measure is like one per quarter with regards to a family event, which we absolutely did and then expanded beyond that. So we can get the specific data with regards to the number of last year to this year. I can say anecdotally without, there, it is expanded extensively because of the number of people being able to do that work. Never before have we had these broad special education fairs with regards to families and having resources for that. We haven't, we've had support groups really isolated just within that birth of five community, and now that's being expanded out to birth to 21, providing sessions on IEP development, providing sessions on the IEP team process, having podcasts, having the opportunity for what we've called those in-the-know videos when we talk about a specific item. We did transportation for families wanting, having to put their kiddo on the bus for the first time when they're three. You know, that's an example of one. So we've really expanded, just expanded out as far as those service options. Obviously, we'll continue to improve, but I, but I can without a doubt say that the number from last year to this year has been extensively different.
I think the other part to capitalize on that, and Ms. Frempong, you asked a little bit about the relationship with CCAC. And one of the things that just even within the CCAC meetings, the amount of resources and community partners that come to those events to then share more information with families and provide those additional connections. So that's not directly captured how many families then meet with that community partner, but they were linked to that person based on that relationship and that connection that was made during that CCAC meeting. So there's also making bridges for families to access other resources.
Thank you.
And then with slide number 10.
17 seconds left, Ms. Frempong, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. With slide number 10, you spoke about the decrease in the mediation filings and it looks like for both years we are under. But I guess can you give us an idea or does that, how does that translate then to, like if we think about budget and money? So a reduction in our non-public placement, do we have numbers to kind of connect to those?
Thank you, Ms. Frempong. You can respond, Ms. Myers.
Yeah, so our goal is looking at that decrease in filings for mediation. Those don't always result in what would be a non-public placement per se. It's really the opportunity for us to, for mediation sometimes is to come to the table with families to be able to have a collaborative conversation about what is the item that they are concerned about and then be able to come to a resolution. Sometimes that may result in a non-public, sometimes it may be something that's within the schoolhouse. What we'll highlight is that what we've seen with regards, which is also a measure of the increase in the parent engagement, is that we've had an increase in families coming to that table without a representative, so without an attorney, let's say. Which means that we are making sure that we're being very clear, that we're able to work with families and support them. And that if they feel that they need to do that, they're able to do that and have an equal outcome with regards to just our team and not needing to then spend money on what would be an attorney.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much for your comprehensive report. Oh, yes, Ms. Chikakalu?
Hi, thank you so much for your presentation. I kind of just had two questions. And so you were highlighting the FALS program expansion where they were running the coffee bar at the EDC. So I was kind of wondering, do we already have other structured partnerships that kind of exist with employers, trade schools, or like higher education institutions, so that we can kind of guarantee transition support? And are there kind of any other plans to construct similar hands-on training for our special education students in the later stages?
Yeah, so within, thank you for the question. So within our FALS programs and our CALS programs, that is a component that we do work with schools to be able to have. So an example would be Owens Mills has a thrift shop that their team is able to staff and be able to support. And we have various other, coffee shops are another example that we have. So schools do that both with, both in-house. And then we also do work with enclaves and with partners in order for students to have other work experiences with, outside of the schoolhouse. And then that's an area that we're looking to grow upon, is that 18 to 21, looking to grow out other opportunities for engagement. That's part of where that workforce development group is coming into play with us.
Thank you. And then for my other question, it was on for slide 16, when it said that 61% of educators felt like they had appropriate or somewhat appropriate resources. And so do you kind of know for the 40, for about the 40%, what the most commonly cited missing resources were for them?
I don't have as far as what those were. That's what I was referencing as far as we wanting to be able to support with the modeling and then the hand-over-hand as far as with doing collaborative planning, with doing a modeling of resources, supporting with curriculum, with behavior strategies, et cetera. For staff to have that kind of application component is one of the things that we hear. But that data point is not then captured, it's just whether or not they have them or don't have them.
Thank you. And then, sorry, with the 25% decrease in the mediation filings, have you kind of been able to identify or find like, I guess, areas of where parents, like why parents were previously filing for mediation and kind of what has been led to that reduction?
A lot of the times, it's wanting to be felt that part of the team process and wanting to have an understanding of what is happening, why it's happening and making sure their child's getting the resources they need. That's kind of broadly speaking as far as what is shared without getting to kind of more specifics, it would be student-specific. But that's generally what's happening.
Thank you. And for my last question, for the in-person speech services for students in the hybrid model, is there any like a specific criteria that determines which student qualifies for the in-person versus the hybrid versus virtual? And if so, is that kind of like an appeal process for parents who might think that they require more intensive support?
So it's an IEP team decision. Ultimately, the team discusses the service delivery for the student. And it is a service delivery, so the team can discuss as far as if there were barriers to them being able to access. And then if that is, you know, documented and there's, it goes through the normal team process with regards to a disagreement process that is part of those IEP team procedures.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and answering all your questions. Answering all of our questions. Okay, next on the agenda is our BCPS Progress in Action with a Focus on Grants. And for that, I call on Dr. Rogers and she will introduce staff.
Thank you again. At this time, Ms. Charlie Green, Ms. Lagaman, Ms. Anderson, and Mr. Cromwell will join us. So this team is going to relaunch our Progress in BCPS in Action series that we've been sharing with our Board of Education members and members of our community to really showcase the work that's happening in schools and in offices. This presentation in particular is quite timely, given the changes that we know we are all experiencing around finances at the federal, state, and local level. And so we are very proud of the work that has been accomplished to date. I shared a little bit about it in the overall budget presentation. But really, this team will speak in depth about what has occurred this year and where they are in terms of securing additional funding and supports for our students that we serve. So turning it over to you, Ms. Charlie Green.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Rogers, and thank you Board Chair Lichter, Board Chair Harvey, I mean Vice Chair Harvey, members of the Board of Education. We appreciate the opportunity to share a bit with you about the work that's been happening with the Director of Grants. I am joined today with Ms. Heather Lagaman, who will speak specifically to the position. But I'm also joined by Mr. Eric Cromwell, as well as Principal Anderson, who will talk specifically about not only how this position guides and acquires grants, but what it looks like in a schoolhouse and how it shows up in the lives of children. So we're super excited about being able to share that information with you. And so if we can move to the, oh, the next slide? And I got too excited. There we go. So I'll talk a little bit about the position before turning it over to Ms. Lagaman. The role of the Director of Grants and Special Projects really is to identify funding sources that would help us diversify our portfolio of funding. We don't want to be overly reliant on one source of funding. As Dr. Rogers indicated, it is particularly timely. When we envision this position, we certainly did not believe we would be faced with, you know, some potential reductions in funding sources that we've traditionally relied on. We are excited that we are able to really supercharge our philanthropic efforts, looking to the private community to help support some of the things that we'd like to have for all students. But in addition to that, having someone who is charged with making sure that their eye is on anything that's happening, either federally, at the state level, and in other places, to make certain that schools are aware of what funding is available. So schools have the opportunity to not only liaise with Ms. Lagaman, but in addition to that, to have her guide them through the process so that if there is funding that perhaps they were unaware of, she's able to take that project from beginning to end. And when we first envisioned this, we set a goal of $2 million, which sounded like a whole lot of money, and it is a whole lot of money. I will say, without stealing any of the excitement of the presentation, that that goal was met and exceeded. And we're excited about the potential for this position. So without sharing more, I will turn it over to Ms. Lagaman and the team to share what it looks like in Team BCPS.
Thank you. And we can go to the next slide. It has been a joy to embrace this position. And it's been wonderful to really look at how can we, as a system, look holistically at all of the things that we need to accomplish, hear all of the voices. We had a listening session to find out from everyone what they were interested in, what funding needs we have, and then be able to go out and seek them. And as you can see on this slide, through research, and then also through looking at how can I build relationships with businesses, with local and county and state government, colleges and universities, as well as philanthropic entities and other foundation sources. So we've used a multifaceted approach to really, as Ms. Charlie Green said, it's been wonderful to supercharge our funding portfolio and diversify, just like we would in our own personal investments. If we can go to the next slide. This is a little bit about what she was alluding to with some of the funding updates to spotlight a few of the things that we have accomplished. The almost a million dollars in the Maryland Center for School Safety Grant has gotten us some vestibules as well as some Open Gate funding. Another one that's exciting is the $200,000 for the SEL grant for Project Wayfinder, which you'll be hearing a little bit more about later on, and that's in partnership with the Education Foundation. And another one to spotlight is the Hopkins funding, which we'll be talking a little bit about later, that they've provided for us for the Maryland Mesa Program so that we could pay for the coaching stipends and free up some EDA funding for other uses, which has been wonderful. If we go to the next slide, we've got a few more, like to spotlight our stars. So a couple of things to showcase here, the Maryland Department of Natural Resources Grant has allowed us to update our science curriculum to be reflective of things that are happening locally in our environment so that we can really meet our students' needs in their, in their community. Also, it's been great to be able to provide that funding for incentives for attendance for bus drivers and attendants, as well as the Maryland Center for Computing Education School District Grant, which we're receiving for the first time. And excited to have that provide professional development, K-12 for computer science. And if we go to the next slide, I'm going to turn it over to our stars of the moment. It's always great to hear exactly what's happening with students.
Good evening. It's my great pleasure to talk a little bit about the partnership we have with the Applied Physics Laboratory. The Maryland Mesa Program has been part of Bonhamer County since 1997. And APL has been a great partner for that entire time. If you're not familiar with Mesa, in this case, the M doesn't stand for Maryland, as many of the acronyms in Maryland do. But in this case, it stands for the math, engineering, science, and achievement. And if that sounds oddly like STEM, you're correct. But given that the program was started in 1970, it actually predates the concept of STEM. So the organization that founded that realized that there was a need for a STEM workforce, even though we didn't know it was called STEM at that point. And they've really put in, and what they've realized is that the way the world works isn't about what you know, it's what you can do with what you know. And it's really about applying the skill sets that students have to solving real-world problems. And so the students in the Maryland Mesa Program each year participate in really realistic challenges. Everything from monitoring the health of an infant to creating planetary landers and a whole variety of things, even, you know, to the point of computer programming right now is too, which is really a growing aspect to the, to the program. And the funding that APL has been able to provide this year was in direct reaction to the reduction in funding we had to support EDAs at schools. And so that funding has allowed us to maintain the program at the current level that we have. And so we're grateful for that partnership. So I'll turn it over now to Principal Anderson to talk about the program at her school.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to share information regarding a program that we benefit from with grant funds. For over, for nearly 20 years, we have been able to partner with Johns Hopkins Applied Physics Lab in participating in the Mesa Program. We have, every year, every year, we have approximately 50 to 60 students spend anywhere from three to four hours in extra time each week working with a teacher to work on their challenges that are provided through the Johns Hopkins Program. This program runs from October to March with competition season happening in the spring. Students work in teams to really design, fabricate, and test different solutions to these challenges. And they really help them to develop critical thinking, problem-solving, research, and presentation skills. And all of these are utilized within STEM careers, of course. We have had the opportunity to participate in a state-level competition every year that we've been, had the program at Eastern Tech. And three times, we've been able to go to the national competition in that tenure. Mesa gives our students an opportunity to really work on real-life problems that are associated with STEM. But it also gives them an opportunity to work on interpersonal skills. So that collaborative opportunity to work on team, as a team, to develop some leadership, time management, as well as communication skills is very rewarding for them. Because that then helps them with their networking opportunities. We've had students visit the Engineering Club, they have mentors from this program, internships, as well as many scholarships. We receive scholarships every year based on our participation in this program. We currently have an intern who is at the Johns Hopkins Applied Physics Lab and a part of our Mesa Program. of our Mesa Program. The other unique opportunity that this affords our students is the collaboration across curriculum. So we are a magnet program that has nine programs in our building, but everyone is available to participate in Mesa. So it gives students an opportunity to bring their expertise that is associated with their program, to increase their ability to create and problem-solve. And so, again, that's a benefit when they're applying to college and looking for STEM opportunities upon post-graduation. The biggest benefit for us is that the grant funding provided by Johns Hopkins Applied Physics Lab really enables us to provide the resources and the mentor to support our student. We can't do this without the teacher's support. Our teacher spends a minimum of three to four hours each week, working individually with the students, which has helped to increase their engagement and participation in really developing successful projects. And what that has allowed is for us to free up money in our school-based budget to then provide opportunities for students in other ways. Thank you.
And before we move on, I do want to take a moment, and just to clarify why we think this is so important. We know that principals really appreciate EDA funding, and families do too. We know that students who participate in after-school activities, that really augments their education, and really, for many, provides an incentive for even being in school. We have had a practice in BCPS for a number of years, where schools were given a budget and perhaps saw it as a suggestion or a target. And so most recently, we've really been holding schools to the budget that is based on the enrollment of their students. And we recognize that for some schools, this does create a bit of a hardship, because if you are used to overspending and all of a sudden, if you think about your personal life, having to stick to that budget, it does create a little bit of a crunch. And so the types of opportunities we're discussing here today, and the money that is brought in through the grants that Ms. Lagaman is shepherding in, allows schools to free up some of those funds and better support what might be growing needs of schools that are outside of the budget. So we're really trying to find other ways to fund those things we know are good for kids, while allowing schools to stay within their budget. I did want to clarify that, because I do want to make certain that we are not cutting EDAs, we are, but we are holding people to their budgets, we are, and we are also, at the very same time, trying to show them a way where they can actually secure additional funding to be able to provide those activities for students that, you know, perhaps they had long done, but because of being held to their budget, we're, we're not able to do any further.
And I really want to thank Ms. Lagaman also for, because this was one of the first times, apparently, that we've had, we've used outside funding to support EDAs, so she helped pave the way to make sure that could happen. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, and so we're going to continue to shift with the community impact as a portion of what we're focused on, and that is a direct reflection of what we were just talking about there. We've got students getting some positive results, and then also, the relationships that I'm building in the community have been wonderful resources for those supports. And so just to spotlight a few, the Towson Chamber of Converse, as a member there, able to find some partners and businesses who are able and willing to support our students with donations and other philanthropic entities. Also, Chick-fil-A has been a wonderful partner with that. They've provided us with some awards for our Champions for Children recipients, as well as for the gala. And so also, the other one on the end there, Cody, up in Hunt Valley, has been a fabulous partner with our Student Support Network. I head up there and pick up about 300 lotions and shampoos and conditioners for our Student Support Network, and it's just been wonderful to see how they've really stepped up as a community partner to help provide our students in need with some much-needed resources. Another way that we are able to do this is through an Education Foundation collaboration. It has been great to partner with Heather Woolridge from the Education Foundation, and look at how can we build connections for, again, those community partnerships, as well as grants that require a 501(c)(3) status. So those are the two major ways that we've been collaborating. And if we go to the next slide, that has a little bit about some of the grants that require a 501(c)(3). The Baltimore Community Foundation has been a wonderful place to apply for things. I know Mr. Cromwell has applied for a grant recently as well, for some transportation, so hopefully he'll be receiving that. And that does require a 501(c)(3) status. So that's where Heather and I collaborate, so that we can make sure that we can get those in. And as you can see, we are already in year two of the School Culture Grant, which you have seen probably on their website. And then also, we're in year one of two for the one I was alluding to earlier, the Wayfinder Purpose-Centered SEL Grant, and schools applied to participate in that. I had the privilege to see some of the professional development in action, and it's great to see there really, it's resonating the belonging curriculum that is given through this, and the sense of identity-building, relationship-building, and creating opportunities for students to be great community members in the future, is part of the purpose of that. And community engagement also, we are thrilled, and again, this is why I think Mr. Cromwell's here, we've got lots of different science connections, it's been wonderful. We've got the Ripken Foundation STEM Centers, which are in partnership with BG&E and Exelon, and we now are up to 16 of those, thanks to them, so we are very grateful for that partnership. Then also, as I mentioned, we've got folks that we collaborate on, looking for donations for Champions for Children, like I was mentioning with Chick-fil-A, BCPS Fest, looking for things that we can provide to the more than 4,000 folks who come, thanks to us also with the communications team, working on that. And then, of course, we've got the gala coming up, and looking at, we had Kaiser sponsor a table, which is great, and we also have had many other folks with silent auction items and things like that. So if you have not gotten your ticket, now's the time to be thinking about a lovely evening out, and we will have many things there for you to bid on, so. And lastly, we are really excited about applying for the first time in BCPS history for a Congressional earmark, and that went in for a little over $5 million in collaboration with Andrea Darian and our Early Childhood Community. We're looking for playgrounds for pre-K expansion. We did submit that, and we'll submit by the end of the week to Congressman Oshewski, and so we've got those in the queue. One of the things that we are making sure to do is operate on parallel paths, so we are taking advantage of applying for everything that we see in state, federal funding sources, and then we are also looking for those philanthropic entities, how can we build the donations, look at other grant sources that we can apply for, so that we are operating, like I said, on parallel tracks, to make sure that we're getting the fundings that we need and diversifying the places that we're looking for and the partners that we're seeking to collaborate with. So we'll end on the high note here of really taking a look at our grant totals, and also some of the ones where we do track what grants that provide benefits to BCPS, but not direct deposits into our account, because we want to make sure to make that clear. So those are some of those that are spotlighted there. And I was also really excited, I let Ms. Charlie Green know on the way in, that this afternoon, found out that we got another $96,000 grant from, we're very excited, from MEA, so we're going to be adding that to the total, breaking news.
Do you want to describe what that was for?
So that's for the decarbonization, so one of the things it's going to look for, it's for energy. So that's one of the things that will help our energy bill, which we know has been something that has been a point of discussion.
That's a big one over here.
$96,000, but we'll still keep going, as we said on the slide.
So thank you so much for that. You know, we've heard from the Education Foundation a couple times as board members and about the work they do, but I think we haven't heard about the work that you're doing to secure these grants and funds for us, and it's really important, not only in these budget times, but just to give us, you know, a little bit more to help supplement what we're already providing, but especially for a lot of those after-school programs, and the one that you described at your school, just sounds so meaningful, wonderful opportunities for our kids. Questions from board members? Ms. Pumphrey?
Some of the grants you mentioned, the Education Foundation, can you describe your relationship and how, as far as how you work with the Education Foundation? Do they also assist in obtaining some of these grants?
So we do collaborate, so that if I see something, I'll reach out to her and vice versa, and then we look at dividing and conquering as far as the, the research and the writing of it, and we also then work with the appropriate content area to make sure we're getting it submitted, and then also make sure that we're looking at the fiscal implications, any indirect costs that need to be added, or things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Stoleski?
Thank you for all of your great work. Just something that came to mind with the energy cost increases, there are numerous solar panel companies that actually provide the panels free of charge, and then the profits from the surplus energy that's produced is split, you know, a certain percentage would go to Baltimore County, and a certain percentage would go to the company. So just something else that I wanted to recommend, but thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
So I love this. I'm all about the diversified funding streams and getting all kind of funding into the school system. And what I've learned, that the number-one reason you get money is because you ask for it. And so do you have a list of priorities or plans that you want to get funded, or people or organizations that you would like to fund Baltimore County, is there? So what's the strategic approach, I guess, to gathering these funds?
Sure. Yes, and yes, to both questions. So first, when I began the job, I did a listening tour, if you will, with all of the different offices and the chiefs appointed folks to talk with me about the needs, and I've compiled all of them and continue to add to it, because I have an open door for schools, as well as central office, so that anyone can contact me at any time and, and add to that list of priorities. Then simultaneously, I'm looking at, I have a spreadsheet that I keep of all of the grant opportunities that are existing and continue to, I've had on there grant databases, webinars, and things like that on different funders, to make sure that I'm adding to that and being able to look for other ones that are a match. So I've always got my priority list ready to go, and particularly for like a philanthropic entity or a small foundation, something like that, that I can look at what their priorities are and match them with the priority that would be a fit for us.
And how large is your office? It's just you?
Yes.
And so, so is their staff on that priority?
It's very energy efficient.
Oh, yeah. Okay. And then, and then I would just encourage everyone, if you have not already purchased your tickets to Inspiring Hope Gala, definitely do that. It was a wonderful, wonderful event, great fundraiser for, or a great way to, to get additional funding into the school system.
And thank you very much, Ms. Booker-Dwyer, for that plug. We are also making sure that everyone understands that we really are raising funds that will go, will contribute to after-school activities for students. So we want to be very specific in our fundraising, so that those who are perhaps concerned about funding for students and activities for students, that they recognize that a ticket, or even a donation to the gala, that is our express purpose, and so we're excited about being able to support all schools with the wonderful activities we heard about that are going on at Eastern and the other schools that were pictured on that slide.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Chika Kalu?
Yes, thank you so much for your presentation. And so I was looking at kind of like the $200,000 SEL grant and the Improving School Culture Grant, and so since the Improving School Culture Grant is already on its second year, kind of, is there a way for us to kind of have a contingency or sustainability plan? So if the grant is, isn't renewed for a year for another reason, just so that we can still continue the program?
So we can reapply? They do multi-year grants for the Baltimore Community Foundation, so we can choose to do that, or look for another funding source, either one would be a possibility, yes. Thank you.
But I do want to highlight, thank you for that question, that, that having someone in this position, always with their eye on, you know, what funding sources are still plentiful and what funding sources may no longer be available, it allows us to be very proactive in making sure that we are not in a position where a grant, you know, is lost or goes away, and we don't have anything to backfill with. So she's always looking for that, and so it's, it's really key to have someone who's accountable for that work.
Yes, thank you. That is very evident in just surpassing the goal by over double the amount of which you anticipated. And then just for Ms. Anderson, for Eastern Tech, with that 20-year partnership with Johns Hopkins Applied Physics Lab, and just advancing to three national conferences, I think, what do you think has made Eastern Tech so successful in its STEM endeavors, in its competitions, and just in supporting students in that atmosphere?
So we have, we have kind of an unofficial motto. We tend to declare that we are a school of innovation and collaboration, and so we really have revamped all of our programs to emphasize the design, design-thinking framework, so that students, whether it's culinary, construction, engineering, law, all participate in that same mindset of design, analysis, and thinking.
Thank you. And you actually just mentioned, like, just remind me of my other question. Do you kind of know any efforts being made outside of the non-STEM realm with the, like you said, with students interested in construction, or the, I think it's the Law and Public Policy Magnet at Eastern Tech? Just for students to also have additional opportunities that kind of mirror what Johns Hopkins collaboration is, just for those concentrations?
Yes, we have an abundance of opportunities at Eastern. We have, on any given day, in our school, about 50 different student groups running, in addition to specialized support groups, and so students have the opportunity to really participate in extracurricular activities during the school day as well, because we don't want transportation to be a hindrance. So we look for opportunities within all fields, including our arts, and we support our arts and music programs, as well as our STEM initiatives.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you so much, Ms. Anderson, thank you so much for representing our principals with your presence tonight. Next on the agenda is the report on the Single Audit 2024, and for that, I call on Mr. Saris.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Rogers. Do I need to push a button here? Okay. Thank God for that. So the Single Audit was presented to the board in, on January 28th, and one of the concerns that was mentioned was the, the finding number one that was listed in the, in the report. And I just want to mention that that finding was initially presented to the Audit Committee on November 12th, and at that time, the Audit Director from Clifton-Larson, Ms. Sherry Amos, was here to make a presentation and be available for questions. And then that same audit finding was presented to the full board December 3rd. And the reason it appeared in the Single Audit is because Clifton-Larson's standards require that it was to be repeated, but it was not a new finding, there were no new errors in the Single Audit. And I do want to highlight that the, the auditor's opinion on the annual comprehensive financial report is unmodified, which is the highest level of assurance provided under governmental auditing standards. And we are especially proud of that, given that, that the errors that were mentioned in, to the Audit Committee in, in November, were errors that were corrected prior to the finalization of, and the filing of those statements. There were no instances of reportable non-compliance, there were no material weaknesses in internal controls, and all the, the errors that are contained within that first audit finding were disclosed to BCPS and before the statements were final. And just worth repeating, those final, financial statements are accurate, and the nature of those area, of those errors, all related to the balance sheet, which is where we account for assets and liability. They did not affect cash, they did not affect revenue, and they did not affect grants. But the item was noted again in the grant report for Single Audit, which is why it was added to this agenda again this evening. Within the Single Audit, there were four additional findings to that first repeat finding, and they were not material. I just want to summarize that the, the grant expenditures for FY 2024 were $257 million. And the fiscal impact of two, two of the four findings is just under $19,000, so I think that's significant, especially given that the, because of the significant COVID funding expenditure still being in 2024, they did, and they audited five programs instead of the typical three. So the first one, we've already discussed, the second one has no dollar impact, that was the inability to verify one of the two quotes required for a, a bid. for a bid under $50,000. The, the third finding, excuse me, was the inability to locate timekeeping records for two employees. This is something that we've already addressed by implementing the UKG time clock system and which will be expanded with the new Oracle Time and Attendance Program that could be, goes live July 1. The fourth item, school student enrollment. And that is the accuracy of enrollment. And we have since worked with Student Support Services to provide training at all the schools for our attendance, timing and attendance liaisons so that we can try and keep all these records intact so that they're available when the auditors arrive. And you can imagine the, the enrollments and the withdrawals that take place during the course of every year are still kept on paper. So in this case, they, I think there were about 18 records that they couldn't locate. And the final finding for the grant-related items was again involving timesheets and the ability to locate those paper documents, which we have, which will be all fully automated July 1. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Saris, for that. Questions? Mr. McMillian? I couldn't tell. Mr. McMillian?
I have the utmost respect for Mr. Saris. A personal respect and a professional respect for his 40-some years in this business. But I want to point out that you are representing management, BCPS management this evening. I'm extremely disappointed that we didn't have a representative of Clifton-Larson and Allen here to present the Single Audit. If I'm not mistaken, what you referenced in November was her talking about the financial report.
Correct. That's.
And, and considering, now the financial, now I understand that that report wasn't gone over with Ms. Amos because we canceled the committee meetings in February. But then it was put down at information and we didn't talk about it at all. Considering that.
Have you started my clock over here, Ms. Burn?
Considering that that cost us between 350, or 250 and $300,000, I'm confident that if we'd reached out to Clifton and Larson and Allen and asked them to have a representative at this meeting, that they would have done that for the fact that they've done this for a number of years and they want to continue in doing it for a number of years because of the amount of money involved in their, in their pockets. So I'm just disappointed. I'm very pleased that Mr. Saris was here talking about the audit. But I'm disappointed that Clifton-Larson and Allen is not represented here tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Domonowski?
Yes, I'm not sure if you'll be able to answer that, this. But when they take the sample size, do you know what portion of the total that sample size is?
Typically, it's, you know, between 1 and 2%. So, but it's a representative sample. So they have a computer program that they use to generate that sample from the totality of the records that we provide.
So when the sample size shows like six out of the 18, it's a 1 or 2% of the total?
Of the, yes, the total that was tested.
The total that was tested. There were six deficiencies in the six out of 18, and that's one, okay.
Right.
And I'm not sure, I think one of them had to do with non-public placement of students? Like a?
Well, unless that was, not to my knowledge.
Yeah, it was finding 2024-01, the first one, adjusting general entries. Non-public.
Oh, correct. So this is one of my favorites because every year, when the fiscal year ends on June 30th, we submit, we have to submit all of our tuition fees to MSDE. And every year, they are very slow in paying us back. Typically, in December, we get a check. And so every year, we have to calculate the amount of outstanding receivables that we have with MSDE. And because it's such a significant amount, there's always an entry that has to be posted for that receivable. And in this case, we under-reported the amount of money that MSD owes us. They actually owed us $3.2 million more than we originally recorded. And that was corrected before the statements were finalized.
So how do you keep track of those non-public placement tuitions? If, so you know what to request?
Well, the Department of Special Ed submits the bills. They're reviewed by, by Ms. Myers and by the Department of Fiscal Services. And then they are sent to MSDE. And then we certify the invoices and we submit the request for reimbursement, and it takes a while. So.
I was just wondering how you wouldn't know how much, you know, so you're saying you had to put in a number, but you wouldn't, you don't, you're kind of guessing at that number, what you're?
No, we should know the exact number. As Clifton-Larson noted in the statements, we had some untimely and unanticipated staff turnover right in the middle of this process last year. And that's one of the errors that we found and corrected.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
And so when I, I look at this, some of the errors was just due to the fact that records were being kept by, on paper and not electronically.
Correct.
And as, this board has now invested in timekeeping and ERP systems so that we won't repeat those mistakes of the past of having the, you know, the, the old school documents that lead to these types of audit findings. And I think that is something that's very important to note because had these investments been made previously, we might not have seen these audit findings. And so this board is really working to help to advance the system so that we are not doing paper time cards and having these types of audit findings in 2025. So I just wanted to make that point, no question.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is information, which includes the minutes of the January 22nd, 2025 Southeast Area Education Advisory Council Meeting, revised Superintendent's Rules 3113, 3121, and 3125, and an update on key school legislation. The next item on the agenda, the next item was added to the agenda is Board Resolution 2025-02 Censure. The Board is committed to modeling decorum for the public and for our students. We are mindful of this duty and want our public to know that we have heard your concerns. Because we take our responsibility seriously, it is with seriousness and gravity that we present the following proposed Board Resolution. And at this time, I call on Ms. Harvey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say that having conviction and civil discourse are not mutually exclusive. Displaying passion for a purpose or a cause and displaying collegial respect are not mutually exclusive. So as a board, we agreed to a standard of conduct, and we also agreed to hold one another accountable. And it is for this reason that I moved to adopt Board Resolution 2025-02 Censure as follows. Whereas the Board of Education of Baltimore County is committed to maintaining a professional and respectful standard of conduct in all board interactions with each other and the superintendent, as outlined in the Board Handbook, Board Policies, and the Superintendent's Contract. And whereas the Board recognizes that mutual respect and professionalism between board members and the superintendent are essential to the effective governance and operation of the Baltimore County Public Schools. And whereas Board Member Maggie Domonowski exhibited a lack of courtesy and decorum during public discussion at the board meeting on January 28th, 2025, by engaging in rude and disrespectful conduct toward the superintendent about the proposed FY 2026 budget and interrupting her when she asked for clarification of a question. And whereas Ms. Domonowski engaged in these actions using a tone and manner that was perceived as uncivil and aggressive, both by other board members and members of the public who communicated their concern to the board. And whereas Ms. Domonowski's actions in the meeting were inconsistent with the board's published standards and expectations, and if not addressed, could undermine the integrity and credibility of the board as a whole, the board's relationship with the superintendent, and the superintendent's effectiveness as the board's chief executive officer. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education formally censures Board Member Maggie Domonowski for her inappropriate conduct at the January 28th, 2025 meeting. And be it further resolved that this censure serves as a public acknowledgement that such conduct is unacceptable and contrary to the professional expectations of a board member. And be it further resolved that the board strongly urges Ms. Domonowski to immediately refrain from any further such unprofessional conduct and to adhere to the board's standards and expectations for member conduct. And be it finally resolved that this resolution shall be entered into the official record of the Board of Education in the interest of transparency and accountability and adopted this 11th day of March, 2025 by the Board of Education of Baltimore County.
Is there a second?
Second, Chike Kalu.
Is there any discussion? Mr. McMillian?
As a 71-year-old human being, I have a difficult time at this state of my life judging and disciplining a peer. I taught school for 35 years. I didn't have an issue disciplining students. I disciplined people that worked underneath of me. I've been disciplined. But in this situation, I just, I just have extreme difficulty judging another human being and their actions and then voting for, you know, a way to, you know, discipline them. I, I'm, I just, I have difficulty with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Pumphrey?
I, just a comment. While I agree that there was a disrespectful tone in the past that the public unfortunately had to see, I can't, part of my personality is to give grace. And sometimes, you know, I can't separate that from the personal level and the business level. And so I am prone to give grace in all, throughout my life, through decisions that we make and through, you know, and I just reiterate what Mr. McMillian said, that we are adults and professionals. And although the disrespect is seen, I think it can be discussed with us as a board and not necessarily something that needs to be open discipline to the public.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Zaleski?
Thank you. I also want to echo what Mr. McMillian beautifully stated. My preference would have been that this would have been handled privately amongst the 12 of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Ms. Domonowski? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Domonowski?
Yes, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on my behalf. I was only seeing the, the resolution briefly, but I wanted to just point out a few things. There were references to my tone and demeanor or behaviors during the specific interaction with superintendent regarding the budget line item for college and career readiness. These are subjective attributes based on a personal feelings, opinions, or individual perspectives. I also wanted to note that these opinions about my behavior during the one interaction were shared by members, by the public. As far as I was made aware, there were only two emails shared with myself and other board members, and one of the emailers wished to remain anonymous. It should also be noted that I did apologize to Dr. Rogers directly for making her feel uncomfortable or as though I, my line of questioning was meant to be aggressive in any way because that was not my intent. While my tone or demeanor may have been perceived by some as rude, lacking decorum, or inappropriate, at no time did I actually use foul or even inappropriate language. Once again, I would like to apologize to Dr. Rogers for the way my tone or line of questioning made her feel. However, if or when this resolution is passed, I will be following up with an appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Ms. Harvey?
Just quickly, I want to clarify that a censure is not discipline. It is the board's expression of disapproval of a behavior or action. And that is how we got to this place. We have had discussions around conduct in the past, and I believe the record speaks for itself in terms of behaviors that people on this board or my fellow board members have identified as disrespectful and not conducive to the work that we need to, to get done here. And so while it brings me no joy to put this resolution forward, I feel like as a board member who holds myself to a standard and who agreed to hold myself and to hold each other accountable, that is the appropriate thing to do in this instance.
Thank you. Ms. Chika Kalu?
Yes, and thank you, Ms. Harvey. I would just also like to add that I personally do not feel accountability to be synonymous with discipline at all. I truly believe accountability is for the sake of acknowledgement and seeing that moving forward as a board, we are setting a higher precedent. And I do believe if there was behavior that was conducted in the eyes of the public, I think there should be some form of resolution in the eyes of, in the eyes of the public. And I think we're setting a harmful precedent if we say that simply because someone is a colleague or a peer, that they are above or they are exempt from any form of accountability. Because if I'm looking from a student perspective or even just in the realm of education, if I fail to hold one of my peers or another student accountable, that is setting a harmful precedent of what truly is, what truly, what accountability truly is and what that means in today, especially within a professional setting. So as you put, Ms. Harvey, it doesn't bring the joy, the Board of Education joy, to move in this direction. But I think it is something that is also necessary when this has not, when this has not been an isolated conversation.
Thank you. Any further comments? Ms. Gober, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Friendpaul?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Chike Kalu?
Yes.
Ms. Zaleski?
No.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
No.
Ms. Pumphrey?
No.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Domonowski?
No.
Ms. Lichter?
Yes.
Favor is seven?
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is Board Member Comments and Agenda Setting. Instead of going around, is there, if you, just raise your hand if you have a agenda item or any further comments. Okay. Ms. Chika Kalu?
Oh, I would just like to recognize March as Women's History Month.
Thank you. Any further agenda items or board member comments? The last item on the agenda is announcements. The board's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 25th, 2025, at 6:30 PM. Also, the board will hold a public hearing on the Arbutus and Catonsville Middle School Boundary Recommendation on Wednesday, April 2nd, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the auditorium at Catonsville High School. Registration, sign up to speak begins at 5:30 PM until 6:25 PM. Thank you for joining us tonight. The meeting is now adjourned.